Okay, good evening, everyone. Apologies for the slight delay here, busy night. A call to order the meeting of the Stratford Zoning Commission at 7:05 PM. All of our regular members are present, and while we're here, a big congratulations to Commissioner Henrik, who'll be moving over to the Board of Education, Commissioner Vacola, who'll be moving over to the Planning Commission, and I'm sure Mr. Vigliotti, Mr. Francis will work well with the three new members, Commissioners-elect Vigliotti, Watson, and Petroselli. So, good job, everyone, and I'm gonna miss working with you guys. There's this new thing called Netflix, I think I'm gonna explore how that works, I'm not familiar with it, actually. Yeah, I know. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on November 3rd and November 7th. Mr. Henrik, would you please call petition one?
Text amendment, petition of the Stratford Economic and Community Development Commission seeking to add a new 3.32 to define incidental live music and entertainment and to amend 7.1.7.2.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is the petitioner present? Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and please go through your proposal.
Yes, my name is Frank Pavaqua. I am the Vice Chair of the Economic and Community Development Commission. I live at 45 Salem Road here in Stratford. I'd like to introduce what the Economic and Community Development Commission is trying to do. So here is an overview of the amendment intent. Under section 1.7.2 of the Town of Stratford has prohibited the use of outdoor music and entertainment. Historically, the zoning commission has required special case approval for indoor entertainment as well. Given the COVID-19 pandemic, restaurants had shifted their focus to providing food and entertainment to the outdoors, which is not currently permitted under the zoning regulations. The proposed text amendment will look to permit such activities as long as they comply with a noise ordinance identified in section 145 of the town code. Additionally, with the passing of the Budget Implementer Bill SB 1202, section 196, all Connecticut municipalities are required to allow outdoor food and beverage services as an accessory use to a licensed food establishment. So we're gonna go over the existing and proposed changes included, including a review of consistency with the plan of conservation and development. The proposed text amendment, the new 3.32 incidental live music and entertainment. Any live or recorded music or entertainment inside or outside a commercial establishment, such as a restaurant or brewery, is permitted, subject to strict compliance with the Town of Stratford's noise ordinance, chapter 142 of the town code. Live entertainment, including any musical act, including karaoke and disc jockey, theatrical acts, including stand-up comedy, plays, reviews, dance act, or song and dance act, or any combination thereof, performed by one or more persons, whether or not they are compensated for the performance, on a premises that is open to the public or for a private event, whether or not an admission is charged. This definition of live entertainment does not include adult entertainment or adult-oriented The new 3.32 now defines the use and states enforcement mechanisms. Before I sit down and finish up here, I speak on behalf of the Economic and Community Development Commission in supporting businesses. The Economic and Community Development Commission has unanimously supported this new text amendment. The proposed text amendment will allow our restaurant community across the board to provide entertainment for their customers and ensure their continued success. The Town of Stratford's prohibition of outdoor entertainment is currently regulated on a complaint basis, which can lead to inconsistencies and confusion. The town's noise ordinance was created to set parameters for businesses and residents in order to establish uniformity with regard to adherence to the regulations. Mary Dean, the Economic and Community Development Director, will go over those changes requested in our text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mary Dean, 995 Beaver Dam Road. So, we had Jay Hibansky help us with the text amendment wording, and the removing K, where there shall be no live or recorded music played or projected outside the establishments, is the only change directly related to 3.32. The other changes clean up the outdoor dining regs in order to comply with new legislative requirements. So I will just mention them, just to, for the record. So 7.1.7.2, outside dining regulation, outside dining subject to, we must remove the approval of the zoning commission, that's for that section. For A, that whole paragraph has been deleted. Under B, they've replaced staff with commission. Under E, again, they've replaced the Town of Stratford Zoning Commission with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Under J, we completely deleted, the outdoor dining area shall not exceed 20% of the interior patron area. K, I've already mentioned. Both below, there's another K, and, I believe that's L, are completely being deleted. Our timing, so to get back to 3.32, as we told the Planning Commission, our office has worked extensively with health, police, and of course, planning and zoning. Our timing is intentional, so that we can put parameters into place to ensure the establishments adhere to the noise ordinance, because it won't be busy again until the summertime. Along with the help of the zoning administrator, I made phone calls to each of the economic development directors in our neighboring towns of Trumbull, Milford, and Fairfield. And despite what others have claimed, each director told me they do not prohibit outdoor dining. Our restaurants are supporting the text amendment and look forward to having outdoor entertainment that is not prohibitive. As for the one or two establishments that have difficulty following the rules, we are putting preventative measures in place, because we don't want a couple of bad players to ruin it for all the other establishments that wanna be able to have live entertainment. With specific suggestions from our Chief of Police, Joe McNeil, and some of the other departments, once the text amendment is approved, we will take the time, over the winter months, to craft an annual administrative permit in viewpoint. All establishments wishing to provide outdoor entertainment must renew the permits annually in January for the first two or three years, to make sure that they're following all the rules. Police, zoning, and health must all sign off on it. If the establishment has a record of multiple infractions, they will not be able to proceed with their permit. And they will know that, because the police will be called, health will know, they will know, we will all know if there have been multiple infractions. So unless they can provide assurance that they will adhere to the noise ordinance, it may have been suggested to some of you that the police department may not be equipped with noise meters. I can assure you that if the police need the meters, I have been assured that they will get them and they will be trained with them. The training that's required. So I do thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from Commissioners, Mr. Henrik?
So, a little, a little while back, Little Pub had come to us and was seeking the ability to do outdoor entertainment. One of the things we had done was put timeframes on that, you know, I think it was, I can't remember exactly, but it was like, no music, no outdoor music, Mondays and Tuesdays, maybe even Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, every, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, and Saturdays, they had to stop by like 10:00, Sundays by 6:00. Just to, I mean, if you're, if you're in a budding property or in the neighborhood, we just kinda wanted to limit that. We also included in what would have been a weekend timeframe, I think five or six holidays, Cinco de Mayo, Memorial Day, Labor Day, July 4th, and St. Patrick's Day, I think.
So, the noise ordinance would cover that, and I believe Laura Dantcho and a group are actually reviewing, making some changes to the noise ordinance, and they have asked zoning, health, police, and, and our department to, to give them feedback. So we can certainly do that. Now, I just want to confirm that Little Pub can't have live music on the, with this, that doesn't allow them to have live music in that center area. It allows for live music on their porch, not in the center area. Jay, if you can confirm that.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, I know there have been some questions about, you know, who could take advantage of this. One that I've gotten is, can Little Pub take advantage of this at their vacant lots that they came for a special case for a couple of months back? They would not be able to. If you read the regulation, it says for a commercial establishment, such as a restaurant or brewery, there is no use that is established at that site. The last known use that was approved there was a single-family home for a subdivision that was approved. So, Mary Dean's correct. You'd only be able to, Little Pub would only be able to have music, or any restaurant or brewery, for that matter, at their existing facility, so at the Marnik site.
So, to that point, then, taking, say, Acapulco's or the Sitting Duck, they, they have the ability to come outside with their outside seating, but I think Acapulco's is perhaps town-owned property that, or the Little Pub, not the Little Pub, the Sitting Duck is, is town property, it's public property, whatever, it's a sidewalk. Would they be able to put an outdoor band on the sidewalk there? Or, or Paradise Pizza, who takes advantage of the passageway?
So I know Sitting Duck does their music right inside, but they will open the doors.
But would this allow them, or based on, on the same analogy used with Little Pub, where they can't use the space across the street that's outdoor dining at the moment, would these other restaurants be unable to, to use those spaces, even though, even though they have outdoor dining there, but they're not necessarily part of their property?
I'm happy to answer that. So, I mean, the town has granted them access to use that space as their, as their private dining area. So whatever we approve here would apply to that space. So the answer is yes. If they wanted to have someone sit with a guitar out front in their dining area, they could do that.
And Deliciosos has done that. I mean, they have a guitarist that comes outdoor in the summer.
But then, so we've allowed Little Pub, and, and part of it is because of the governor's outdoor dining rules. It's an outdoor dining area, which then makes it part of their establishment, and because of that, would they be allowed, and I'm not opposed to it if there are restrictions on it, and I propose the restrictions, but would they be allowed to use it under these, because it is part of their outdoor dining, which is also, say, Little Pub or Deliciosos is part of their outdoor dining? So is it a, I don't see the difference.
So, the way the executive order was written is that any approval that was in place prior to the executive orders carry over. They did not, Little Pub did not have approval for live music at their site, therefore, it could never have carried over to their, where we were allowing them to have that outdoor dining at the lots. So they never had approvals to do out, live music or entertainment over there. So changing, by adopting this, it wouldn't change that, because they never had the approvals in place prior to the executive orders being established.
But our, but our, our old regulation, or our current regulation, which we're trying to amend, didn't allow any outdoor, any outdoor entertainment. So, under that train of thought, nobody can actually have outdoor music, or are they all kind?
No. Whatever use you have that's permitted prior to the pandemic, you were allowed to take that. Let's say the zoning commission approved live music for a restaurant, and they had an outdoor dining that was already approved prior to the pandemic. That was allowed to move to their outdoor dining spaces. Whatever they were allowed to do inside, they were now allowed to do outside, because the executive order supersedes the zoning regulations. Without us having to amend those regulations.
But nobody had permission to do outdoor, or even indoor dining, if I'm...
Indoor music.
Indoor music, indoor entertainment, nobody had permission to do either. I mean, I know we had allowed outdoor dining to a number of the restaurants, so is it because the outdoor dining was granted prior, are you saying, not entertainment, but outdoor dining was granted prior to the pandemic, they can use that space for outdoor entertainment?
No. There are plenty of establishments that are here in Stratford that are approved to have live entertainment inside. So if they had that approval prior, the executive order allowed them to take that to their outdoor dining establishments, because people couldn't be inside, they allow, whatever you were approved to do inside, you could now do outside in your outdoor dining areas.
Did they get special permission to do?
The executive order allows them to do that.
No, but did they get special permission prior to, to have indoor entertainment? I was...
Yes, they did. Many restaurants have.
Okay. I was unaware of that.
Yeah. They were special case, I mean, I kinda learned some of this as we went along. I would say there's maybe six or seven restaurants that had gone for special case approvals to have live music. I think we had one...
I know Nicky's came before us, yeah.
Correct. But they didn't have it prior. I mean, I think they were, everyone knew they were doing it, but they didn't have the approvals to do it. And so they came in and sought those approvals.
I mean, I know Joey C's, way back, we granted them. I obviously wasn't on the zoning commission for four years, but I was an alternate, but I don't remember any other restaurants, and I, I wasn't here for all the meetings, but, because it was an alternate, but I don't remember other restaurants coming to us to seek that special, but I was under the impression Nicky's was probably the only one.
The only one that I can remember off the top of my head is The Windmill. I know The Windmill has, they have approvals for live music. I can't remember, there's a handful that have come for those approvals.
So then there would be very few restaurants, or only a small handful, that will be allowed to use their outdoor dining areas as entertainment areas?
Under the executive order, correct. Not if this text amendment was to get approved.
I'm a little confused. If this text amendment gets approved, you had said only the ones that already had permission to have indoor entertainment could move it to the outdoors?
No. Currently, as things sit, if you don't have existing approvals prior to the pandemic and the executive orders...
For, for indoor entertainment?
Correct. You cannot bring it outside.
Okay.
If this text amendment were to be approved, this essentially says, well, the, the restaurants have the authority, because it is now no longer a prohibited use by the Strat, local zoning regulations, that they are now allowed to do that.
Have outdoor entertainment?
To have outdoor entertainment. The executive order makes it, makes it confusing, and I understand that.
But so, but are you saying that only if they've had, only if they've had prior, the prior approval for indoor entertainment, they can move it outdoor under this new, or will all restaurants be allowed to have outdoor entertainment?
All.
All restaurants will be allowed to have outdoor entertainment?
Anyone who wishes to do it.
Okay. Based on the new text amendment?
Based on this proposed text amendment by the applicant this evening.
And then back to my point, we've granted some of these restaurants the ability to go outdoor, is it, and some of those, some of those permissions have been given on town property. It's not their property that their outdoor dining is, so can they, can they then move it onto town property, because they have outdoor seating already approved? And then, and then why would Little Pub be any different? Because Little Pub has the outdoor, you know, and then if that's the case, then can Little Pub do it on the, where they've got the picnic tables all along the beach? Can they do, because that was...
If the zoning commission had granted them the approval to do that, then yeah, they could. I mean, I don't see why they would, I'm not sure why the zoning commission would do that. I think it's a different circumstance when you're thinking about, you know, when you're thinking about the, the restaurants that are downtown, where there are no front yards, there's no side yard, their building has a zero setback, it's right on the street. Their dining area, it's either there, on the very wide sidewalk, or in the rear parking lot, or, so I think that they're, they're two different, two different set of circumstances.
Well, so then, so then...
Hypothetically, yes.
So then the restaurant, which sits next to Acapulco's, who has taken over the parking lot, and I'm just, I'm not opposed to outdoor music, I'm all for the outdoor music, I'm glad we're looking, you know, but I'm trying to understand who this is gonna affect and how it's gonna affect, but that restaurant, who, obviously, like all the other restaurants there, came on the sidewalk on the front, but then the, then the, then the governor's executive order allowed them to go on the side, and they've taken, you know, and, and great for them, and hopefully they fill that up every day. But now, will they no long, will they not be allowed to have music on the side, and only in the front?
That's correct. So when the executive order expires in 2022, I believe it's either March or April, all those additional outdoor seating arrangements that we have permitted go away. So they go back to their original outdoor dining that was approved for the, you know, eight seat, eight, four table, however many tables they have right out front. The side seating, you know, as, as far as the zoning office is concerned, you know, if they're able to work out a deal with the, the town, or the state, whoever owns that property, and they come in and they ask for additional dining space from the zoning commission, then I, I don't see why they couldn't. But anything that was allowed under the executive order goes away when that executive order expires.
So then if Little Pub comes in and gets permission to do outdoor seating across the street from the zoning commission, then that would then allow them the opportunity to do live entertainment across the street?
As what? And to get seating for what?
Well, right now they got the vacant lot, there's outdoor seating there, because of the governor's executive order. Like the restaurant Sebus, which is next to Acapulco's, if, if Sebus comes and gets permission from the zoning commission to expand their outdoor seating to encompass what has been granted to them by the governor's executive order, then they will be allowed to have live entertainment on the side. If Little Pub comes and gets permission, like Sebus might, to do outdoor seating across the street to encompass, you know, what the, what the governor has allowed them, will they, then, then at that point, they will be allowed to have outdoor entertainment across the street?
I think I, I think I understand your question, and I think if it's in conjunction with Little Pub, and the zoning commission said, "We're gonna allow you to do permanent outdoor dining across the street at the vacant lots," then as long as the, you know, till April, they technically could do, they could have live music over there, technically. You know, they still would have to come before the zoning commission and get a yes. I think they came a few months ago, and they got a no to do that.
Well, they got a no to do entertainment, but not, but the outdoor seating is granted to them by the governor's executive order.
Correct.
Sebus has the, the driveway to the right of the building has been granted, they've been granted permission by the governor's executive order to, to have dining there. If Sebus comes to the zoning commission and gets that approved by the zoning commission to put that full-time outdoor seating, then they can do outdoor entertainment. If Sebus, if Little Pub comes to the zoning commission and gets permission to, to extend the, their outdoor dining beyond the governor's executive orders, then they would then be allowed to do live entertainment there as well.
It's hypothetically possible. I mean, anything is possible, I would say. I mean, it's whatever the zoning commission happens to approve.
Well, but if we approve this...
The zoning commission were to approve that, they couldn't do that. If this text amendment was approved tomorrow, they could not have live entertainment there tomorrow. Because I'm the one who signs off on it, and I'm the one who's, who determines whether or not they are in compliance with the, the governor's executive order and the zoning regulations or not. And I've already made the determination that they wouldn't be able to take advantage of this regulation, as is, without coming back and seeking additional approvals from the zoning commission.
So any, any restaurant that expands their outdoor seating, does, if we approve this today, any restaurant that expands their outdoor seating, a restaurant that doesn't currently have outdoor seating, a restaurant that expands their outdoor seating would not by right have the ability to move their music outside, is what you're saying?
No. No.
Well, if, if Little Pub expands theirs into the space across the street, is, is granted permission to expand their outdoor dining across the street, then, and then another restaurant does it somewhere else, but because they've expanded it now, they're granted the right, then Little Pub should be under the same, under the same umbrella?
See, I think I'm having a hard time following whether you're talking about a permanent approval, or what is approved by the executive...
No, I'm talking about if a new restaurant comes to town, and they come to us, if a new restaurant comes to town in six months and say, "I wanna open up a restaurant, and I wanna have outdoor seating," and we approve the restaurant and the outdoor seating, then what you're saying is, either, well, my question would be, will they, by, with this text, be allowed to move outdoor dining, outdoor entertainment into that? So then if Little Pub does the same thing, and comes to us and gets that permission to have outdoor seating, why wouldn't they be granted the same right as we're granting the new restaurant that comes over there? I mean, it, it seems pretty straightforward to me, but I think...
Because Little Pub is overlapping the executive order and the current...
I'm saying if they come for special permission to get it after the executive order, when it expires, then they would be allowed to have, based on this text, by right, they would have the ability to put outdoor entertainment there. Because the, because you just said the new restaurant who comes to town, who, who adds outdoor entertaining to it, by right, because of this text, would have the ability to, to move entertainment to the outdoors. Little Pub, if they come and, and get permission, that would, from the zoning commission, that extends beyond the authority of the governor's executive order, then by right, they would have the ability to put music outside as well?
No, that's incorrect. There's no use approved for that, for the vacant sites. There's no use there. You can't just have outdoor dining associated with nothing. As soon as you grant, as soon as any zoning commission grants a use allowed at those vacant sites, let's say you allow for an outdoor dining venue, then it gets the right to take advantage of this regulation. They don't get to do it as of right, because there's no established restaurant use at that site.
Well, it's part of the restaurant?
It's not.
No.
It never was.
No.
No. It, the out, the exec, it is as in the executive order...
Are you saying it's only if it's a contiguous piece of the property, and because it's across the street, it doesn't...
Only is the executive order, is it allowed, the outdoor dining? That's the only reason they're able to be doing what they're doing there.
And, and that's only because it's at this current moment, but if they came to this, the zoning commission and got approval to do it, are you saying because it's, it's a, not a contiguous piece of the property, then it wouldn't, it's not called a restaurant?
That's correct.
Doesn't make sense to me, but, go ahead, I'll pass.
Just Commissioner Francis, how you doing tonight? My, my only question is, how would you regulate that? Like, for example, Sitting Duck is right next to Deliciosos, and Paradise is right down the street. What if they all decided to have bands outside at the same time?
So, I, a lot of the restaurants are already doing this, but it's prohibited. So we would like to be able to say, it's not prohibited.
Yeah, where is your question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on.
Can you hear me?
A little bit better.
Yeah, just talk a little bit louder.
Okay. So, so Sitting Duck is already having performers right where the door is, with the doors open. Deliciosos is already having a guitar player play outside while the folks are eating pizza, and we haven't received any complaints. But it has not been leaked, it's, it's been prohibited. So that's our point, that these restaurants are entertaining their diners under something that's prohibited, and so we would like to be able to open it up, and then they must follow the noise ordinance. And that's why we're doing permitting, and we will, trust me, we have multiple departments that wanna see this work, that will be on top of it. So, that's my point. There's just so many restaurants that are all... So that's my point. There's just so many restaurants that are already entertaining their, their customers. But technically, it's not, it's, it's not allowed.
Hey, and I'm not against this by any means, but I'm just, I was just curious, and, you know, if they do have to come for permits every year, annually, correct?
That's why we said, and I think it was, you know, we talked with Chief McNeil, I talked with Health, I talked with Jay, and we felt at least the first two to three years, they need to do that. Maybe the system will be so run so smoothly and efficiently, after that, we won't need to, but if we need to, we'll extend it.
I, I was just curious because I know there could be an instance where maybe both performers are pretty loud, sort of kind of overlapping each other. And that's what, that's where my concerns were coming from. So if they, all three of them, now Paradise is a little bit further down, but if they, if them two were having to, you know, acoustic, you know, performers there, and they're overlapping each other-
Right. Well, so far, I think they've played good neighbors, and they've, because they've both done it, but apparently not, you know, and I, I believe Deliciosos might have been earlier in the evening, because there's this outside, whereas Sitting Ducks has been inside, you know, with the doors, you know, inside the doors. So, yeah, that's something we would have to contend with if the two, if the two neighboring businesses can't make it work.
Oh, so we would leave it up to them to kind of regulate when you do it?
We would hope that they would be, you know, they would be, give courtesy to each other, but I think we would have to address that as it happened.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vigliati or Mr. McCullough?
Hi, Jim Vigliati. So can you say who gave you the assurances that the proper people will be trained to be able to monitor the noise levels?
The mayor and the chief operating officer of the town.
Okay. So, and, and with that, and, and do you have any idea would it be run through the police department, or would there be a special officer who's going to be in charge of, of doing that?
Well, currently, I mean, currently it's not run through the police department, but the police department are the first call on a Saturday night, on a Friday night. And I've spent time talking to Chief McNeil, and, you know, there's, they have their cars out, and so there's been discussion, do we have a meter in each car? And my feeling is, it would be great to have that as a backup. If someone's arguing, you say, listen, and you have that meter there to say, well, it's really not that loud, or hey, it is too loud. Look, we have this here. So that's why, that, we wanted to have this text amendment changed with time to talk about, do we want them, and, you know, what is, what does the chief of police want? What do the police want? Do they want one in, in all the patrol cars that are out and about on a Saturday night? Or do they feel they just need two or three? Health department has one. And they've only had one for the past several years.
They have one?
One meter, one noise meter. Right now, they're the only department that has it, because it's run through, it's really the health department that monitors the noise ordinance.
Any idea how many people know, how do you work that meter?
I am sure it's probably whoever's working and responsible from the health department. I know Maureen Whalen does, but if Andrew's responsible that weekend, I'm sure he knows how to use it.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening. Just one question or a couple of questions. Is it just limited to acoustic, or is it amplified?
We, we talked about the fact that it would need to have some amplification because you wouldn't be able to hear, but again, that's where the, the ampli, the noise ordinance, the amplification needs to be.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, you're not going to have a full band out on the, I mean, on the sidewalk.
Well, you know, how could-
I wish you would, because I got a few bands that I got planned coming in, but-
Well, you know, it takes away space.
Metallica and Van Halen, but, you know.
It takes away space from the diners, so you have to remember that, you know, so it's only allowed within the parameters of, let's, you know, using some of the examples of the restaurants that have smaller outdoor dining. What we've seen is a single or two, you know?
I'm for it, you know, like you say, you go to Fairfield, they have music outside, it's nice, you know. As long as it's regulated, you guys are controlling it, I see no problem. But, thank you.
Okay. First, a comment here. I, I am pleased with the fact that it references Section 142 of the Town Code. And just for purposes of our debate here, it says, "All personnel conducting sound measurements shall be trained in the current techniques and principles of sound measuring equipment and instrumentation." So the town government, whichever, I've heard Health, I've heard Police, I've heard different people, it's not being, whoever's going to be the persons that doing the enforcement, they are required by our law, Section 142, to have that training for all personnel that would be involved in it. And it lists how you're supposed to do it, as far as manufacturer's instructions, how to aim it, and so on and there. So I would make, you know, hopefully people take the time to, you know, familiarize themselves with it. I do have a couple of questions on, you know, since we're acting in our somewhat legislative capacity here. First of all, I, I appreciate the fact that, and I encourage and are very supportive of making sure that we know who is actually conducting this and the certification process that not really is, I don't, maybe certification's a little bit too strong of a, of a thing, but just registering to know who is potentially offering this type of entertainment. My concern though is that I don't see this procedure that you had spoken of in the text itself. And I even like, the, the crossed out text, I'd almost love to reapply it here, which was that each permit shall be valid for a period of not more than one year, but upon application to the administrator may be renewed. Failure to comply with the conditions shall be cause for revocation. So my question is, is that it's not in the text, how do you feel about us codifying the procedure of making sure that we register and we know who the people are that might be offering the entertainment?
I agree with that. I mean, in order to, to go into viewpoint with a permit, we would know who was, who was, who was applying. I would probably do some outreach for the businesses that I know want to do outdoor entertainment and have without bothering their, you know, that aren't in a residential area, and just say, guys, if you're planning on, you know, having a guitarist, or you need a permit. So that, we will reiterate that, and we will, we will uphold it.
Would it be, in your opinion, were you contemplating having a point of contact for each one of them? Because my, my concern is that let's say there's an incident, and the incident's probably going to happen on a Friday or a Saturday night. Town hall's closed, health department's closed, everybody's gone home. I remember when we did, so the police will probably be the first ones to get the call, as it is right there. I remember we went through Little Pub. One of the comments that was made was, there was an incident, and the owner was, I was away. Okay, I understand. People need to go away, I need to go away. But in this permitting process, I'd like to make sure that we have the go-to person's phone number, so that if things do get out of hand, you know, we're not waiting until Monday morning to deal with it. We can say, hey, Mr., Mr. Smith, at your bar, it's getting loud, you know, be aware of it, we're coming down there, and that we're not really at the whim of, you know, maybe a, a part-time manager, assistant manager, somebody that's not having ownership or control or responsibility in there. So I'd like to have that quote-unquote "stop buzzer" person identified within the permitting process.
Yeah, we can, we can put that into viewpoint and make sure that they have a contact that's a 24/7 contact. We can absolutely do that.
Okay. I hate to dive back into a little bit of the, some of the questioning that went on here. And maybe it's just to clean up the text a little bit, and I'm sure our town attorney might be able to suggest it. The way that the text is, is here, it says, "Any live or recorded music or entertainment inside or outside a commercial establishment such as a restaurant or brewery." So I'm wondering if it might be advisable to clarify outside, meaning on, some qualifying language, on their premises, or, you know, so it is not abused in the way that I think Commissioner Henrik might have been suggesting in there, to make sure that it's clear that it's on their property. It's not on a public piece of property or some, some other place that's not part of their restaurant, or not within their ownership, or something like that. So I think that might need a little bit of clarification.
And I can work with our zoning administrator on that, because Jay and I were working on the wording on this. I was using his expertise when we were talking about how to move forward with the wording on the text amendment, so we can certainly-
Sure. And then we, and, and, you know, from a legal perspective, I hate ambiguity, so, such as a restaurant or brewery. So are there any places besides restaurants or breweries that are contemplated that might have this? Would it be, you know, let's use our wild imagination, a department store, a bar, a bowling alley, uh, I don't know if we have any bowling alleys anymore, if they ever resurrect that one. Dairy Queen decides, well, that's, I guess, would be a restaurant. You know, is there any other places that you think might, beyond restaurants and breweries?
Well, I guess it's, and, and I defer to zoning administrator on this, but you know, Perry House, when they have an event. You know, Sterling House, when they have an event. I don't know if that falls within this, or that's a separate. But those are the type of things that I'm thinking of, are fundraisers that occur with some of our nonprofits. That's the only other thing I can think of.
Okay. And then just lastly, we were talking about enforcement, the, going back to the referenced Section 142. Let me find it, I just lost it here. If I'm not mistaken, it actually does list a regimen of potential fines that can be levied for violation of the ordinances. Who has the ability to levy those? Is it zoning, health, police? Who has the ability?
Right now, it's Health, correct? Right now, it's Health. And, and, and we could, I mean, right now, the, the noise ordinance is being reviewed, and we could talk about where we might see the fine aspect of it, if, if we think it's better placed elsewhere. We can do that, but, you know, we work with Health all the time on cease and desist for other reasons with restaurants, so yeah, it's, the Health Department is very used to dealing with a, a lot of the different restaurant issues, whether it's payment or health issues, et cetera.
Okay. And I believe this also, I'm just looking, a lot more of this, it references the commercial limits, which I'm assuming this would, there's residential, commercial, and industrial, I'm assuming all these would fall under commercial. And it actually also has a reference to nighttime, so it actually sets the hours for different days of the week, so.
It does.
What's that? No, it's not a paper, I just looked up the Town Code, Section 142. Uh, I do. I could read you the, let me read you the relevant point that I was just gonna, I just lost it, unfortunately. But I am pleased that it is referenced in there. Oh, man, I just lost it. Sorry, I'm not. Where's, okay, nighttime hours, just to be clear, that this would adhere, since it's referencing it in the regulation, it says, "The hours between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, Sunday evening through Saturday morning, and the hours of 10:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Saturday evening through Sunday morning, with the Saturday evening and Sunday morning hours in effect of the night and day before, federal and state holidays provided." So the bottom line is, that's actually the, the current, and that's the standard that you're planning, that this would envision doing without exception?
Right.
Okay.
And, and, you know, right now, like I said, they are reviewing the noise ordinance, so if we think that it needs to be modified a bit, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Or make a recommendation, because we don't have the final say.
Okay. Mr. Henrik, you have a question?
I know you guys have put a lot of work into this, and I'm not trying to overcomplicate it. Again, with, when, when we discussed Little Pub, we did it, and I'm glad to hear you have those timeframes, and hopefully those will get tightened up to some extent, or more clarified, but the hours of the Health Department, you know, for instance, right now, they're the only ones who have a noise meter. You know, if they don't fall within the timeframe, but, or, or if they do, you know, if it's Saturday, 8 o'clock, and somebody pick up the Health Department hotline and call up and say, hey, this guy's down here, too loud, and will the, will the Health Director hop in their car, drive over there, point their noise meter, and say, no, it's too loud?
So this is why we're doing it at this timeframe, because outdoor entertainment will start, I'm sure, come, first of all, they're going to have to get permitting, and in the meantime, that's where we're going to sit down with the police department, who are the first call when it's 10 o'clock on a Friday night, midnight on a Saturday. And we will figure out the noise meter, what the police department needs. Because the Health Department is the contact for the noise ordinance, but we have to be realistic of who the first person at the, at the, for the complaint is.
The cops always get the call.
And that's what, and that's what we're going to work on now, because now it's November, and we're on the winter months, and this is where we're going to, you know, put together the viewpoint, adding 24/7 contact. We're going to put together all the information we want in that viewpoint permit when the restaurants are applying, or the breweries.
So then, say, we have an incident, you know, a bar decides to get a little louder, and then maybe Mr. McCullough could answer this, he was a, he was an officer, but would the, would the police department have the ability to go down and shut them down?
Yes, and they've done that. There's already music, that's what I'm saying, this is already happening, and the police are already dealing with it.
Okay. And then I would assume at that point, I mean, I just, I mean, for the residents, and again, I, I I would prefer to see it, and I know amplified, I know an acoustic guitar has a little amplification, the singer has a, has a microphone, so to that extent, it's amplified. When I, when I say no amplified music, I'm thinking more electric guitar, drums, you know, electric bass, cranked up music, which, which happens, you know. And that's why with the Little Pub thing, we'd, but even, even take like weddings, you know, and I'm not, I'm just talking about some, Little Pub had talked about having weddings there. So now somebody has a wedding, and, and a DJ, and that gets loud, and again, and we have the thing, not at Riverview, but the place that used to be over there, with, with a lot of that stuff. So we were just trying to curtail by putting some restrictions on what they were able to do. I know the noise ordinance addresses some of that, but I'd just like to see, you know, that we have some clarification, so when, when the police do go there, it's not, you know, it's not a question of, is it or isn't it? You know, well, it's .72 decimals, no, you're over the timeframe, it's too loud, you know, and I'm sure you guys will work all that out, but those are just some of my concerns, that it, it's, it's, there's no ambiguity there. You know, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, straightforward, now here are the rules, you know, you violated them, and, and then the other part would be, how do we address new, you know, new restaurants that don't have the, the permission to do indoor dining? Can they move it out? And where does that sit? And what, what boundaries are they allowed to go into?
And the thing is, that the executive, the governor's executive order expires before the warm season.
Yeah, no, but, but I'm just saying, so where, so, so, but where are they going to be? Like, say, a new restaurant opens up, will they be able to do that, or a current restaurant who wants to have entertainment, do they have to come and get a permit to have indoor entertainment, so then they can move it outdoor? But how, how is that all, just some, you know, how is that clarified? And then so we don't have people taking advantage of it, and it's, you know, just clearing up some of the ambiguities, but that, you know, again, and I've said from, from the beginning, I'm in favor, and you and I talked about it, I'm in favor of the outdoor dining and, or the outdoor entertainment, but so long as it's to a respectable level, and that there aren't ambiguities within the law that allow them to get away with it, or if they do take advantage of it, that, that there'll be swift action, so that the neighbors' quality of life won't be disturbed on a weekly basis on Saturday night when, you know.
Right.
Those, those are my only concerns, yeah.
Okay, last chance, any questions, members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Councilman? Okay, in favor, go ahead.
Gregory Cahn, 234 Klondike Street. In, in favor, but wanted to point out a couple of items that in the 3.3.2, it says is permitted, kind of seemed to me more of a carte blanche permit, where we, Mary mentioned that they're going to evolve an actual permitting process. So if this was passed in anticipation of such a permitting process, we may want to annotate, annotate that. to annotate, annotate that. Going down to the section 7.1.7.2, outside dining regulations, what's crossed out is subject to the approval of zoning commission. And I think one of our, some of the discussions seem to circulate around outdoor entertainment wouldn't happen unless outdoor dining was pre-approved. So it'd be nice to see, without regard to the executive order, that the town was still having a permit process before you could do outdoor dining. And once you got that, then the incidental live music would come along with it. My, where I live is pretty much near the corner of Stony Brook and Broadbridge. At the end of the park, there's a catering business and a barber shop, and a catering business has outdoor dining set up. They've never used it, but they have probably a 40-car parking space back there. I can see them, whether they've been approved for outdoor dining or not, I can see them wanting to do outdoor entertainment. Across the street is a package store with a large parking lot, and as another use, maybe a package store would want to do a wine tasting with outdoor music, for example. And over on Success Avenue, there's three dining establishments, right before you get to the Bridgeport Line, there's a big parking lot behind them, and they could possibly permit, and that's where some of our senior housing is. So I, I think about these, probably 80% of us live in an area that's at least an eighth of a mile away from any commercial or business-type zone. But a lot of neighborhoods are more proximate and more at risk if we, so I guess I'm in favor of this. I would just ask to clarify that outdoor music is a descendant of prior approval for outdoor dining, that the zoning commission still retains its current privilege of approving outdoor dining, and that we put an antidote in the 3.3.2 that refers to the pending permitting process that would be used as an intermediary control. And given those three factors, aside from the training of someone that could respond with the appropriate devices and certifications and the weekend hours, if you will, then I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you, sir.
The Jeep Club would be one of those.
The Jeep Club, yeah. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Victor Mirror. I live at 635 Short Beach Road, and I would like to see these regulations in place. I think it's very important that there's enforcement. And my real concern is that the noise ordinance is there to control and prevent people from being injured by loud sounds, not the unwanted, unwelcome, unstoppable penetration of their homes by noise that is loud but not yet damaging. It's disturbing but not yet damaging. And so I think that the standard of the noise has to be damaging is unacceptable. Okay? If it's too bright out, if there's a sign that's lit up and blinking, you can draw your shades and stop it. You can't stop sound. So if it's too loud, if it's disturbing your children, preventing them from sleeping, if it's interrupting your neighbors, yourself, et cetera, you can't block it. You can't stop it. You're subject to unwanted, unwelcome, repeated penetration. That's not nice. That's not fair. And that's imposing and, I don't know, encroaching upon our rights to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness in our own homes. So I think that standard of the noise is loud enough to damage you, injure you, is not good. It's not sufficient. And so that's my major concern. I don't want to stop anybody's business. I'm all for business. I'm all for everybody having a good time. But I don't like people's homes being invaded. That's my point.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else in favor? Anybody in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Gentleman in the back?
Darrell Rathbun, 37 First Avenue, down near Little Pub. I would like to speak against the proposed outdoor entertainment. The, so I heard a lot of things today that was not in that public document. I would like to see that in writing so that we could review it. Much of that has actually made me feel a little bit more comfortable. Some of it still really scares me. So this was written before I got that additional information, but I think I will make it pertinent. First of all, high-level comment, I don't see a problem with requiring a special case approval for this. It, it's working maybe 90% of the issue of, of the problem, or 90% of the cases are fine. Special case approval is to identify that 10% that is abusing it. So blanket approval of all entertainment, I think it eliminates the approval and the authority of the zoning commission to prevent that abuse. It eliminates a critical check and balance, and eliminates the Stratford residents for speaking out and, and having a say in our, in our town. I think, you know, the residents here, I know a lot of the people who were involved with the Little Pub issue are not here, but I still really kind of only see the people from that area. I, I just wanted to understand, how many people are within a couple of blocks of a, of a commercial establishment, or let's say, a restaurant? By show of hands. Okay. And how many people are within a couple of blocks of a restaurant that is not Little Pub?
Sir, excuse me, sir. You really need to direct your comments to us, please. I understand the point you're trying to make, but we, you're, you're speaking to us.
So, I don't think this really represents everybody who might be impacted by this, especially since it says, it talks about all commercial establishments. So I request that zoning requires that the Stratford Economic and Community Development Commission must mail notification to all Stratford residents with properties adjacent to any and all commercial establishments in Stratford to give them their right as Stratford citizens to speak for or against this proposed regulation change that will affect their lives. That would be in alignment with the current 7.1.7.2M that requires anybody petitioning to do that same thing. Two points about the, the plan of conservation and development that actually I, they said it was a consistency, I, I see that as an inconsistency. One was to increase wealth and opportunity throughout the region by collaborating on business recruitment and retention strategies. I agree that this is highly likely to increase the profitability of some businesses, but I believe that it's at the cost of the Stratford taxpayers. Additional police headcount to monitor, to check the noise enforcement, reduction in property values for any place that might be abusing this. And the town's not gonna get any more taxes from these businesses as, as a result, result of this. So this will all be borne by the Stratford residents. Another issue, it says, "To collaborate on issue identification and problem solving to preserve and enhance shared centers of economic activity." Making this a blanket approval seems to bypass any collaboration for something that's obviously an issue, at least for the Little Pub area. Residents already spoke out about that, and I could rehash all that, but there were probably about six against for every person who was for. Second, I think this completely eliminates the ability for the town to even identify any potential issues before they happen. It's basically allowing them to happen, and the regulations would already be in place to have, to, to allow it. I heard some things about having a, an approval, getting an approval for it, but none of that was in the public documents, so I cannot speak to whether that would be sufficient. And then the point that you had made about commercial establishments, I believe that's way too broad and should be explicitly limited to commercial establishments, who primary businesses to provide food and beverages. Otherwise, you could have golf courses, you could have anybody doing that, as you already pointed out. And as already was pointed out, the enforcement of the Stratford noise ordinance is non-existent. People have tried to call up, the dispatcher doesn't even know what to do with that. There's somebody supposedly at the health department that it, I request that the zoning commission formally request the creation of a well-defined, unambiguous process and accountability for strict compliance with the town of Stratford's noise ordinance, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including how dispatch handles such calls, who is responsible for conducting the test, and any training needed for all personnel. So, action items, I think it's obvious here that there's some details that need to be worked out, so I don't think it can be approved as is. So, deny it at this point and work out the details. Require the Stratford, require mailing this out to anybody who is adjacent to a commercial property who would be allowed to have entertainment. Reword the commercial establishments to be more explicit, and formally request the creation of a well-defined process for noise ordinance. Thank you very much for the ability to speak.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Ma'am, come on.
Thank you. The proposed amendment sounds wonderful.
Can you just give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Anne Ferris, Anne Ferris, 133 Maple Street in Lordship.
Thank you.
This proposed amendment sounds wonderful on paper for the Economic Development Commission in Stratford, but for the residents, not so good. The amendment states to allow indoor and outdoor music and entertainment at commercial establishments subject to certain rules in compliance with Stratford's noise ordinance. Fairness for all is not easy, and certainly enforcement is not either. You can have as many rules and regulations the town allows, but enforcement is paramount. The town has limited resources to enforce noise complaints even under the current ordinance, which is no outside music in the town of Stratford. At the present time, there is one person in our town that is trained and certified to use the one measuring device that must be used to measure the volume of sound. Town funds need to be allocated for personnel, enforcement, training, and equipment. It is most important that the mayor, police department, health department, and zoning commission work together to enforce any new ordinance. A test plan for enforcement, training, and certification should also be instituted. This summer, for example, there was a wedding at the Seawall Park. The decimal level far exceeded the allotted amount, and the event lasted well after midnight with alcohol, et cetera, available. Police were called, and the responses were, one, they could not interpret the ordinance, two, they would not, they would not interfere, and three, they, they did not know anything about the situation at all. My response to you is to leave the ordinance alone and enforce what we already have on the books in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Noel Anki. I live at 109 First Avenue. I don't really want to speak completely in opposition because I can understand that it is, can work under certain circumstances. My concerns are that, actually, they even said that, that people are doing it already, and people are just looking, you know, they're having outside entertainment, they're having inside entertainment, even though it isn't allowed, and nothing's done about that. So how can we be sure that it will be done if this is passed? Because it's not being monitored now. I'm also concerned about what will be done about infractions. I know that it's in the main document, which I have not seen. But I know that, I'm not sure how it will be enforced if there's several, say there's 10 restaurants in town, and they're getting 10 calls for about each restaurant. That's a, that's 100 people calling about loud noise on a Saturday night. So I really want to see what will be the first step, the second step, and, and at the second time, they should be shut down for a period of time. I want to see that definitely in it. We live in Lordship, we live near the Seawall, several of us, and we talked about the Little Pub. And yet Riley's, which is right there, is able to have the outdoor and the indoor entertainment. I'm sure they don't have a permit, but it's overlooked. But they are able to without outdoing the noise that's beyond the control. So we just, I just want to be sure that that's enforced in a way that isn't just, well, they're doing it, but we're, we know that they're doing it, but we're not gonna do anything about it. And that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Mary Cutter, also live on First Avenue. This is, like Noel, this is not really in opposition as much as it is to underline what a gentleman said before, you could barely hear him, he was very low-voiced, but he was talking about noise that doesn't have to be damaging to be intrusive. And the more I listen to the arguments about this, the more I'm reminded of all the apartment buildings I've lived in, where your neighbors make noise all the time. So what do they do with those leases? They write in something that says that residents are entitled to the quiet enjoyment of their homes. They leave it very loose like that on purpose, because there's all sorts of ways to disturb quiet enjoyment. And there's all sorts of ways to enforce laws that pertain to those disturbances. And I just want to underline and support what the gentleman from this side said, that noise doesn't have to be damaging to ruin your life. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? If not, Ms. Dean, Mr. Vivekwa, you have the right to rebuttal. Any final thoughts before we close?
So I can certainly understand the concern that, you know, the, the residents, especially of, of Lordship, don't want to have, to have annoying music at, at all hours of the night and day. And I just want to assure everyone that we are looking at, you know, permitting viewpoint and getting it in there and monitoring it. And we understand that that's an, an important part of enjoying living in Stratford. And the other point I want to make is that the ordinance is being reworded, and that's something that we can make a suggestion to in terms of damaging versus something less. That's where the changes would be made in the ordinance itself. And when all our different departments are, are looking at that, we will certainly take note.
No, if you have anything else.
Yes, yes, we, we hear the residents and their concerns, and we can look at this and maybe change some of that wording, some of the language in the, in the text amendment to, to broaden or to tighten some of the, some of the language. And we want to establish this, these levels, the noise levels, the time, the days that it's, it is allowed, so that we all know the rules and what is allowed and what is not allowed.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Ann.
Just for clarification, those changes to the noise ordinance would be done through the council?
So I don't, so Laura Dantcho is working on that and has reached out to the different departments to put their input in, and I believe absolutely it would be the council that would have to do the last approval
Because of the noise ordinance.
Of the noise ordinance.
Of 142.
When they're making the change.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Francis, second, Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, carries unanimously, and a motion to recess our public hearing and go into our administrative session. I'll make that motion, why not? Can I have a second? Mr. Henrick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously. Out of the public hearing at 8:14 PM, and we will convene the administrative session at 8:14 PM. Yes. Hold on one second, please. Hold on one second, please. Actually, we're not going to convene due to a certain situation. We just want to take about a five-minute break, and we'll convene in a minute. Don't go too far. Thank you. All good, okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, we'll call... Come back to order at 8:22 PM, convening the administrative session of the zoning commission. Let's start off with text amendment, vessel technologies. Mr. Henrick, you want to do the honors?
Text amendments, you want to take all three or you want to just take one on a time?
Take all three. Yeah.
You can take all three off at one time, however, I recommend you vote on them separately.
All right. I mean, we'll take text amendments, vessel technologies, amend the zoning regulations by creating new 71, Ohio's housing zone, 313 Ohio's Road, 14, vessel technologies, being cycle review and change of zone from state to state, change of city zone, and 313 Ohio's Road, 14, vessel technologies, cycle interview, and the road subsect 31 of the zoning regulations instructs three-story, 15-unit, four-bedroom development, 230, of Connecticut general statutes, be properly located in the city. Motion to take all three off.
Motion to take all three items off the table by Mr. Henrick, is there a second? Mr. Vigliati, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously, is off the table. Let's take them one at a time.
All right. For purposes of discussion, would take text amendment, vessel technologies, I would make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Henrick, is there a second? By Mr. Vacola. Just for the record, Mr. Commissioner Francis was not present, but I believe, sir, you have reviewed the videotape of the proceedings, is that correct, sir?
Yes, I want to put it to the record. I do... I did review the video of that day, and I also viewed the documents that was provided by vessel technology.
Very well, so you will be entitled to vote on this, so all five regular members will vote. Okay, discussion. Do I start?
Mr. Francis, he's the...
Your district, you want to take it first?
Yeah, I'm going to be a while.
Okay, go ahead, take your time.
All right, so I have a lot of questions. I did see some were answered. I don't think there were some answered in entirety, so I just want to get to some of the points that I had identified. And just correct me if I'm right, or am I wrong? In the section 7.1 dot 1 dot 1 of the zoning regulations, for something like this, a zoning commission has to consider the characteristics of the neighborhood and community to approve this. It's one of the regulations, right, for this to be approved?
Did that get overridden?
No. So, the generals... The Connecticut general statute, 8-30G, for which this application came in, is the affordable housing statute. You cannot consider community character in within... And this is not a Stratford rule, this is the state laws, this Connecticut state statutes. Character cannot be considered as part of the decision for an affordable housing project. And, you know, Attorney Sullivan can chime in if she has any...
Would you care to opine, just that we have it all... We're all on the same page here? Thank you.
Jay's right. I mean, traditionally, you would look and say, if this is a single-family neighborhood, everything should be single-family, but when you have this affordable housing sort of umbrella over it, you can't reject an application just because it's not the same.
Isn't that a newer amendment to the 830G?
Yes.
So, yeah.
And just to be accurate, how many... What percentage of these units are going to be affordable housing? Because they're not all affordable housing.
Yeah, the applicant has stated that 100% of the units are deemed restricted affordable, whereas-
At certain levels of affordable, at certain percentage of their income.
So, in order for... And I'll try to explain this quickly. In order for it to be an affordable housing project, a minimum of 30% of the units have to be deemed restricted as affordable. Of that 30%, some are at 80% of the household median income, some are at 60% of the household median income, while the remaining 70% can be market rate. This project is chosen not to provide the market rate, but providing all affordable units, every single one of them.
All right, and is that going to impact our numbers in Stratford as having affordable housing units?
Sure, you're adding all affordable units as opposed to market rate. When you add market rate, it actually makes the distance greater for the town to actually make up. I mean, the town is trying... Has to, by state law, provide a minimum of 10% of the housing stock has to be deemed affordable. Otherwise, you're subject to 8-30G. Once you receive more than 10% of your unit... Of your housing stock being affordable, you're no longer subject to 8-30G. You can still approve affordable housing projects, but it doesn't supersede the zoning regulations the way they do today. So, when you say, is that going to affect us? Well, we've made up all 15 units go towards our affordable housing stock as opposed to only adding 30%. We're adding 100%. So significantly, it helps us.
It's a net gain of 15, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, this is my question on that. But something like very, very, very serious concerns are, there are some health and safety concerns, like there's been studies done on suburban towns like ours across the country, and when you try to basically create dense situations too quickly, it presents a problem with air quality. And basically, that air quality will affect your quality of life in the long run. It was Planning Zone in suburban areas was the title of it. I can get the website for you guys. So that's one of the concerns I had with this project. A second is that they are basically trying to amend a lot of our regulations, which I'm pretty sure we put in place for a reason. So, converting this to a whole different zone just to fit what they want to put there, it drastically gets rid of a lot of zoning regulations we put in place, I'm sure, from commissioners before us for a reason. I mean, there was one instance where they want to go from five feet to four feet from sidewalk or from the street. If I'm correct, I got to hear somewhere highlighted. Yeah, setback of four feet instead of the regulation that requires five. And if you know that area, which I'm sure you all do, that is a busy street, Honey Spot Road, especially in the mornings, all the commuters, all the commercial trucks coming in in the morning, starting their day work. And let's not forget, there is a school right there that accesses that small street as an inlet to get to the school, which caters our youth and our youth with disabilities. And it's approximately 225 kids. And now, you're going to put a complex, a three-story complex, that doesn't suit that area, no more than 35 feet away from an elementary school that educates 225 students. And the pictures that they sent in their little portfolio does not depict the reality of that area, to be honest. I went there a couple times myself, just to kind of, you know, see, you know, the actual traffic, because, I mean, I live in that area, but I don't necessarily just sit there. You know, I pass by, go to work, or get off the highway, you know? And I noticed, that morning, I took a video on my phone, but I was like, I don't know, it's my phone. It's a lot of traffic, tractor, trailer, trucks, commercial trucks, because we have a lot of commercial companies on that road. And after work, I went there, and that road has backed up, surpassed this potential project, just sitting there. People trying to get home, getting off the highway. So it is a substantial amount of traffic. So in the morning, I didn't get a chance to see the school buses, because I had to go to work, of course, but I took pictures, and that setback where they want to put that building, it will actually make it a really, really confined area when people are... The buses and teachers and parents are trying to get in that one-way area, and the in-and-out outlets and inlets to that parking lot supposedly that's going to be on that property, that's going to be a disaster. And I mean, I feel sorry for the people who actually live on that street. So I took pictures for the commissioners, you could actually see what I was seeing when I was out there. And this project is definitely not conducive to the area. I think it's a health and safety issue, and I would like you to just take a look at the teacher-
Commissioner, can you just hold on one second? I just have a question. I don't know if this material can be entered in since the public hearing is closed. Can the town attorney advise?
You cannot add information now because the public hearing is closed, and that doesn't give the opportunity for the applicant to rebut it. So you can't put in additional information. You can speak about your, you know, your understanding of the neighborhood and... But you can't put in additional documents now.
All right, so I can't submit them, but could you... Could they look... Could people look at the scenario or no?
No, they can't look at the pictures, but you can certainly explain, if you are familiar with the area and there's traffic issues, you can certainly explain that.
All right, so, I took pictures, and basically, the teachers don't have enough spots to park, so they park on the grass, okay? And with one of the... Another adjustments of our regulations, which is supposed to be one and a half parking spots, they want to adjust it to 1.3, which is weird to me, because I can understand one and a half, because, you know, every two units, you'll have three parking spots. That makes sense. You'll have one for one visitor for either one or the other unit. If you change it to 1.3, I mean, you could have three units and still not have enough for one person to park, for a visitor. So, I mean, that doesn't even make sense to me. I mean, these regulations we put in place are obvious for a reason, because that makes more sense of 1.5 parking spaces per unit. Obviously, commissioners before us knew what they were doing, okay? Another problem I had was that it's definitely going to bring down the quality of life, I mean, to everybody in that area. I mean, just with the construction of that property right there, three stories, that's already over the height of, once again, another regulation that we would have to amend. So, I mean, we are drastically amending a lot of regulations, a lot of regulations. It's not just a couple here, a couple there. We're basically creating a new zone just so they can build this property in an area that is really not conducive for that property to be there. It really isn't. I mean, if you see that little, small parcel of property, and I believe they have to buy some property even just to have a buffer between the neighbor, like they have to go through a lot of... go through a lot of adjustments and amendments, just for this to go through. And I have respect for the commissioners before us and the planning and zoning before us, and they, I mean, they obviously put these in for a reason. And I don't feel like we should adjust all these regulations that, obviously, they brought to the attention because of safety issues. They brought to, you know, they brought it forth because of quality of living. They brought into attention because of other issues they may have seen. And I was looking at the video, and actually, I think they documented it, and their answers to our amendment. Now, we know that we have a sidewalk problem in Stratford. I mean, there was a kid killed. I mean, we're doing our due diligence as a town, because I see sidewalks going all over the place now. And kudos to, you know, everybody who made that happen, because there is sidewalks that need to be in this town, for safety reasons, obviously. And their rebuttal to that was, "In reviewing the properties frontages in Honey Spot Road and Fod Street, the intersection of said streets and surrounding area, it is not clear to us who would be utilizing the sidewalk." I don't understand that, but... "Given the lack of sidewalk along Honey Spot on the side of the street where the property is located, as such, we would respectfully request that this request be waived, so they don't want to put sidewalks." That's very concerning to me. So, you're putting your financial benefits in front of safety of our residents. So, that already looks bad to me. So, we know that their main concern is not safety of our community. We know that their main concern is money and get this project pushed through. And from the extremely amount, a massive amount of regulations that we're going to have to amend just for them to build this thing, I don't think that we should put ourselves in that predicament. I also had questions about the receptacles. I heard him say receptacles in the video. Is that privately taken away? Is it a burden on the town for the garbage man to sit there for fifteen units of receptacles? In that one tight little street, where in the morning, teachers are going to be trying to get through that street? It'll be a cluster there. And that street wasn't built to have traffic to that capacity. It was an inlet, pretty much built, to get to Honey Spot School. That's what it was built for. And, I mean, unfortunately, you know, some contractors built a couple houses on it. They got approved for it. That's four units, I believe it was. I think that's a little bit of an issue, but it's there. Now, in order, and when I went through that parking lot, I've seen at least thirty cars. I believe that that school has about a hundred and nine teachers. Hundred and nine teachers. Yeah. I looked it up. Hundred and nine teachers. And they were parked on the grass. Now, if this project only has one point three spots per unit, where do you think they're going to park? I mean, let's be honest. Where do you think they're going to park? They can't park on Honey Spot Street. Where do you think they're going to park? Where's the overflow, all the visitors? Where do you think they're going to park? In the parking lot. I don't think they touched base on a lot of the, or even resolves, on some of the issues that were brought to the table. I mean, I don't want to take up too much time, but, I mean, there's just a lot of flaws in this project that I found. And to get rid of all, I mean, I think it was, can't remember the exact number, so I'm not even going to lie here, but there's a lot of regulations that we're going to have to amend, just so they can build this unit, that in particular doesn't even fit that area, as well as that the parking lot is going to be in, that's going to be another ISO. That parking lot in the front, I don't know any other parking lots that are in the front like that. If I was, I mean, if I was the site planner, I would put that in the back at least, where, you know, the first thing you don't see is a whole bunch of cars. I mean, at least you would see that good architectural design of the building or something, and not just a whole bunch of, a big parking lot. What else was there? Did they identify if they were using a private company, or were they using the municipalities of the town of Stratford?
Is there a question to me? I'm sorry.
Yes, there was a question. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I don't know if they ever mentioned that. I mean, I think they are actually, I think the town would be the one that we were collecting garbage, would it not?
Collecting the refuse? Yeah. The discussion that I recall was that they were going to have bins, not a traditional dumpster, but they were going to have bins, and that the bins would be taken out, or the bins would be collected. I don't recall, and I'm looking at my notes here, I don't have any notes as to who is actually going to be collecting it. I assume it's going to be done by the town.
Yeah, it says, in the response here, it says, "The question is, how does the applicant intend to handle trash on-site? The applicant should consider ending a dumpster enclosure on-site. Response, due to site limitations, there is not space for a dumpster. However, the project will include five trash bins and a garbage collection area to handle trash. See SP 1 shows the location of the proposed garbage." Doesn't appear to say anything about whether it was going to be privately handled or publicly. I'm trying to see if I see anything about it in the book. I don't recall.
And they never had any conversations with me, at least that I can recall, about who is going to be collecting the trash. My concern that I brought up was, you know, I didn't see anything regarding the trash, you know, where was the dumpster enclosure?
Okay. So, that's another issue. And like, I will quote one of the commissioners, you know, rampant overdevelopment in our communities of Stratford. I mean, it's an issue that us commissioners have to make sure we keep in check as a whole. We don't, and we don't want to start overdeveloping and affecting our community's land. We don't want to affect their quality of life. I mean, because people come to Stratford, it's a suburban town, they come to Stratford, because it's a peaceful, beautiful, diverse town with single-family duplexes, and now we have a few more apartment buildings to, you know, establish our growth. But growing too quick, nobody's going to want to come here. It's going to be overdeveloped. They're like, oh, you know what? We'll go to Shell. You know, I mean, that's just an example. And I don't want that to happen to the town I grew up in, that my mother grew up in, that my grandmother grew up in. All right? And that's a big concern to me, because, you know, before I came onto the board, I mean, you know, under the commission, I've seen multitudes of projects go up, and we still have them in the pipeline that's been approved already. So, we got to still keep that in mind as commissioners. And that's our, I mean, that's our job, to make sure we keep that in check, what I said. And like I said, you know, Honey Spot does cater to our youth for their education. But, I mean, there's just a plethora of reasons why I don't think we should approve this amendment, because it goes against some of the regulations and safety precautions we put in place in the first place. That's all I have for now. Because I'll be all over the place here. I see my notes are like all over the place, and highlighted all over the place, but I'll step back in if I have to. But I'll let everybody else say their piece.
Okay. No, thank you. Mr. Hendrick, you want to...
So, back, Mr. Urbanski, you had made, you had made some comments in response to all three of these applications. One of them, the first one, I guess, because this is what we're discussing, the text amendment. You know, we had talked to them about whether or not they had hired a qualified independent firm to, I guess, oversee the affordable piece of that. Have they reached out to you, or given you any notification that they have qualified individual to do that?
I don't recall. I'd have to jump back in and look at the file here to see exactly what was in that amended regulation. However, you know, if the zoning commission could always stipulate that they have to use a, someone that's recommended from the Department of Housing, which is the list that essentially that we recommend. We don't care who they choose, we just want to make sure it's someone who's qualified to make sure the right people are getting into the right units. So, I'll look that up while you continue to comment.
So, I guess one of my thoughts, too, are, I mean, there's a number of issues with this, as Mr. Francis pointed out. We have two options, I think. One would be to deny the application. It's an eight thirty G. If we went to court, if we didn't have valid reasoning, it could easily be overturned in court. The other would be to approve it, but to put in place the amendments to make sure it was brought to certain standards, sidewalks, parking requirements, garbage, you know, bike racks, make sure that they hire a qualified individual. I think that they've kind of come down with this, and they're looking for, I guess, looking for waiver on a setback, and I don't know if we can even do that at zoning. That would need to go to BCA prior to...
No. No. So, they had one thing stated as the setback in their text amendment, and then the site plan showed a setback that didn't even comply with what they said the setback had to be. They amended that. They amended both the regulation, and they amended their site. It was essentially a typo.
Okay.
So, they fixed that. So, there's no variance. I basically was saying, the way they submitted it originally, they needed a variance of their own application, their own zone that they created.
And they corrected, they corrected the zone chart on there?
They did.
Okay.
Both the zone development table and the text amendment.
Do you know if they've done anything with stormwater regulation?
Let's see here. I have the amended section five in everybody's chart here.
In the binder?
In the binder. And I'm looking up the first, I know the applicant at their, the last meeting when they were giving public testimony said, they had corrected all of the requirements that I had mentioned, so...
In, okay.
It's been a little while since I had confirmed, I'm almost positive, that they have fixed all of those issues that I brought to their attention. The only one I wasn't sure of was who they listed as their affordability manager, which I'm checking out now. Three point three, thirty-one point three point two. Designation of a person, entity responsible for the duration. So, they do not specify that they will, the applicant has not specified in section three point, thirty-one point three point two A, that they're going to select someone from the list of qualified affordability managers.
Okay.
However, if the zoning commission heads in that direction of, look, we're considering approving this because you feel you have to, and here are some conditions that we feel you need to meet, that should be one of them.
Okay. And I know there were some comments, and I don't know if this is part of, I guess this would be more for the site plan review, if we get to that point, but the ARB had some requirements, and I would guess that would be something we would discuss more on the site plan review portion of this evening?
Correct. Okay.
But also, really quick, and for them to even try to fight against it in using the affordable housing argument, I mean, if there's health and safety issues, that trumps any affordable housing issue.
Sort of. And I'll ask our town attorney to correct me if I'm wrong in my assessment of it. The way they have it structured, and to the folks that are listening, eight dash thirty G is Connecticut General Statute, section eight, subsection thirty, sub subsection G, which governs affordable housing. And what it states is that, should a zoning commission reject an affordable housing application, they must cite evidence of health and safety issues, and they're very specific about the evidence, that outweigh the need for affordable housing. So, they put that caveat in there and say that you have to then demonstrate that, you know, let's just take it on the surface, that, you know, the density and air pollution would cause such public harm that it outweighs the need to actually accommodate this ten percent goal the state had upon us. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, that's correct. And the other thing is that you can recommend a reasonable change, or you could modify the application, and the applicant doesn't even have to, you know, propose a regulation. They could just propose a project. So, don't get too sort of focused on the amendment to the regulations, or how it conforms to your other regulations. You really do have to focus on the public health and safety issues. So, it's things like, let's say you had a situation where you had a big project and you had no sewers, you only had septic, and you couldn't accommodate, you know, the waste that the project would generate. Those are the kinds of things that would be clear, you know, health and safety issues. So, you'd have to have a lot of evidence that that's a health and safety issue that cannot be, that you can't make a reasonable change to the project to address what would be a public health and safety issue. It's a very developer-friendly statute.
Yeah, it's been a, having sat on a number of these over the nearly dozen years I've been on this, it's hard, and we've had some degrees of success in certain cases. I mean, probably one of the more obvious ones that jumps out in my mind is that, you know, the proposed footprint of the property was on a wetland. I think that might have been one of them. I'm trying to think what the other one was. Drawing a blank here. Oh, the more infamous one that I think eventually we were, the town actually was defeated on, was the Avalon Bay property, where it was highly debatable whether you could actually fit a fire truck underneath the Merritt Parkway to get to it. And I think we actually lost on that one, because they said, oh, yeah, you can drive it down the middle of the road at two miles an hour, and you won't damage the Parkway. So, it's a pretty hefty hurdle to get through. So, you know, yeah, just be aware of that. This is, yeah, this is what we're dealing with. I mean, you're making absolutely excellent points, and, you know, doing a good job representing your district. And ideally, we'd be able to stand on that one. The problem is, I don't know that, should we reject it, we would ever prevail in court, and then they would just override us completely and say, guess what? They can have it the way they want it. So, sometimes it's actually a preferable position to say, okay, what can we do to make this more workable? And go through the process that way than a straight-up rejection.
We could definitely reduce some of these amendments, if we could make them feasible. Have them put in sidewalks, since we're doing as a town as a whole anyway, put that in there. If the town attorney is saying that we need that much of detail of health and safety issues, which I think that there is substantial amount, but if you're saying, you know, it's basically develop, you know, developer-friendly, you know, and, I mean, I will fight the fight if we can actually determine, which I don't know what that process is, because I've never had to fight this statute, you know, second year, zoning commissioner, but, I mean, it just is a lot of concerns. I mean, I would do if a kid killed, because there's no sidewalks in Stratford. That's, I mean, that's not enough, somebody losing their life.
Just to frame the conversation, let's talk about the sidewalks. I agree with you completely.
Do you want to do that now or during the site plan review?
Well, we would have to, we probably would have to amend the reg, because the regulation, let's talk about the regulation, make sure I got this straight.
Because that's part of it.
I don't know that it says, does it say anything about sidewalks in the reg? I don't think it does.
Yeah, it does. I believe I've seen that.
Silent on that.
For us to change that zoning.
Go ahead.
I think, I don't think it does in the regulations. I think I pointed out in my staff comments that the sidewalks had a number of obstructions, as well as it was only three feet, or maybe a little bit less than three feet wide, whereas the... Whereas the town typically, when they're installing newer sidewalks, require require four feet. And I believe.
They didn't have any sidewalks and, because their picture showed sidewalks, and that was part of the big discussion was they showed happy people walking down the sidewalk. And in reality, their site plan had no sidewalks. And the building was four feet from the, from the edge of the street. So, and near a school zone, you know, that's, that's a recipe for disaster. I mean, that, that to me is public safety. You're going to have, you're going to have kids walk into school who have to walk out into the main road every day because they don't provide sidewalks. I mean, that's the.
There's actually a sidewalk, but they're going to end up ripping it up because that's where the building is going to go. So there is a sidewalk to go to the school, but there's not going to be a sidewalk once they start building.
Unless we make that a requirement.
Correct. And you'll have to, excuse me, I'm getting some, I'm getting the 24 Surf Avenue. And this one, a little bit confused because there was a sidewalk issue that was there. The three foot with obstructions, that was, I think, the other project. So you're going to have to disregard that comment from me. Well, I do mention here in my, in my staff comments on page four, I said, an existing sidewalk goes through the southern, as Commissioner Francis mentions, an existing sidewalk goes through the southernmost portion and leads to the elementary school. Should the project be approved, the commission should require a new sidewalk to be constructed along Foch Street, reconnecting the pedestrian access from the school to Honey Spot Road. So I'm not sure if that's speaks to Commissioner Francis's concern, maybe alleviates some of it, none of it, all of it. I don't know.
Basically, what the kids are doing were, are they, you know, if they were walking from, you know, one of the houses on that backside behind the gas station, they walk through the gas station parking lot, and there's grass in front of that first house on the corner that connects to that sidewalk. So they don't have to, they walk about maybe seven to eight feet on the grass, then boom, they connect to that sidewalk that goes towards Honey Spot School. So basically, that would be gone, and it would just be an apartment building there. So they would have to walk all the way to Foch Street on this much, what, three feet maybe of grass with all that traffic on Honey Spot? And you're talking about, I think it's K through two to three. I'm not saying all of them are going to be walking to school, you know, I've that age, but some do.
So let me suggest that we amend the reg. I'm going to say, put it in under, we'll create a new thirty-one point eight point four that says a new sidewalk constructed along Foch Street, reconnecting the pedestrian access from the school to Honey Spot Road shall be constructed.
I could agree to that amendment.
That is consistent with staff comment number four, under site plan review. Taking your words directly. Yes?
During the presentation, he also, the, I believe the owner mentioned that he didn't anticipate that they would have residents living in the structure that owned cars. Not, in other words, there's only 15 parking spaces. And he said, I don't think we're going to have residents there that are going to have 15 cars. So he cited the use of public transportation for the, he anticipated that residents would be using public transportation. So I think the sidewalk should also be on Honey Spot Road.
You also can't delegate that.
Are, are they on?
Sidewalks should encompass the entire property. I mean, kids are going to be, Honey Spot Road is the most, you know, is equally as dangerous, you know. But I think around the entire perimeter of the street-side properties.
So we'll say connecting the pedestrian access from the school to Honey Spot Road and continuing on the lots frontage on Honey Spot Road. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
And you said you would second the amendment, Mr. Francis?
Yes, that amendment, yes.
Okay, discussion on the proposed amendment only? Now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, carries unanimously. Amendment made.
Mrs. Chairman, just, so, so since we're talking in this vein at this point, I mean, a couple of things I'd like to see included in, in this property if we were to approve it would be no reduction to the town's parking requirements. They asked for a waiver on the number of parking spaces. I don't know what that exact number would be, but, but it's a couple of more spaces. So I would, I would ask, A, that we, we change it to, to go to our towns, you know, and eight thirty G has a different requirement, I think, based on recent legislation as well. But whatever that requirement is, I think it goes to our, I mean, I would like to include that. I would like to include a requirement that they put a dumpster space in there. I mean, if you're going to have 15 garbage cans out on the side of the park, I'm sure the health department would have an issue with that.
Can we do these one at a time? Let's do.
Can I just?
Yeah, okay.
And then you guys determine where and how we should go about it, but
Okay.
You know, there's a comment, because this is part of, they're trying to claim this is as a transit-oriented type environment, that they would add bike racks. I think, I think one of the, the comments from the zoning administration would be 15 bike racks. Incorporate all the ARB recommendations, the health department approval, and that they provide a qualitative, a qualified affordable housing, housing manager, would that be the term? That is satisfiable to the zoning administrator. So those are some things that I would like to see incorporated in there. I mean, in my own opinion, the building itself is hideous. And I, and I think perhaps the ARB addressed some of those issues.
We can, we can make them take those stairs off the front of it and turn it to the side.
But, and I don't know, I don't know on the eight thirty G that we really even have the ability to demand or require that they make aesthetic improvements to the structure, but it is about the ugliest application we've seen in the eight years I've been here.
You can modify the application any way you'd like. And then if you give them an approval, whether you're modifying the a lot of times, the reason they want a regulation is so that they can be conforming for financial purposes. So when they go to the bank, the bank doesn't want to know that this is a non-conforming project. They want to know that there's a regulation and that the project conforms.
Right.
So you can make whatever modifications you want. And then if the applicant is unhappy with those modifications, they can, not only can they appeal, which they can, but they can also take an interim step and come back to the commission and say, listen, you know, we want to sort of modify our application. So let's say you, you said you wanted 1.5 parking spaces per unit, which is not unreasonable, and it is in accord with your regulations. And they're saying they've got an application that says 1.3. You say, no, what we're going to approve is 1.5. They could come back and say, how's 1.4? Or they could come back and say, no, the reason we need this 1.3 is because otherwise we can't get the building on the property. But they still would have the chance to come back and modify before they even went to the, to an appeal.
Okay.
Because it's affordable housing.
Okay. And is one, is 1.5, or 1.5 is our measure for parking?
It is, but recent legislation has deemed that that is no longer legal for, for multifamily units.
We, we did opt out of that, but did that, is that?
Council passed it, so.
Oh, the council passed?
Yeah, the council did pass the opt-out Monday night.
You're right.
But does that, but does that opt-out? And if I read it correctly, I think that opt-out excludes eight thirty G applications though. If I remember reading it correctly. I could be wrong.
I don't, I don't recall. I don't remember that, but Commissioner Henrik, you certainly might be correct. Let me see if I have my little legislative changes.
That's our, that's our good friends in Hartford ramming this stuff down our throats that are destroying our neighborhoods.
Well, I think what you have is a singular project before you. So if you, if you think that, I mean, Commissioner Francis has basically given you some lay of the land locally because of his familiarity with it. And if, it sounded to me like he was saying there's parking all over the grass. So if you think in order for this project to be successful, it needs to have 1.5, or it needs to have, you know, a certain amount of parking, then that's what you would put in your approval, because that's what you're, you know, you're making that, that determination. And if they come back and say, listen, we only need to have one because of this, or we don't need to have any, whatever that is, you know, you can sort of worry about that later. But right now, you're looking at this project they've proposed and what, how you think, if you think you can get to an approval with certain modifications, then those modifications, you would, you would put those on the record. And so their approval, the approval wouldn't be what they proposed. It would be what they proposed with your modifications, just like you would do conditions. You know, so you would say, this is what we're going to require. We're going to require sidewalks because it's unsafe without sidewalks. There's a school right next door. There was a, there was a suggestion that this was going to be transit-oriented and that there were going to be a lot of people without cars, which is a secondary reason for needing, for needing sidewalks for safety. But that would be a reasonable change to their proposal to say, they didn't put sidewalks in. We think sidewalks are necessary in order to make this, this project safe.
So just for reference sake, as we're talking, okay, good. I was glad I was able to find it. So make sure most of them agree. The reg in front of you actually says one bedroom, 1.0 parking spaces per unit. Am I interpreting that correctly?
One-to-one ratio.
One-to-one ratio.
And is there guest spaces?
I don't believe there is any provision for guest parking, which I have to say is, in my mind, ridiculous. Because the, the mathematical odds that on a given day, nobody is going to have somebody else visiting the property, even if it's just somebody to come in, repair the dishwasher or something like that, it, it's just ridiculous. The, the odds are there's going to be at least one person at some point there, or they're going to have a second car. If there's a husband and wife working, or, you know, whatever, you know, I think it's, it's within the realm of possibility. So I found that particular provision of this proposed regulation to be very troubling.
So 1.5 spaces per unit would be twenty-three?
No friends, yeah, I guess, for unpopular people.
Twenty-three spaces. But I think public safety too, a big concern of mine regarding public safety is, is sticking garbage cans. Fifteen garbage cans out, you know, on the side of the building. You know, for rodents, for just buildup of trash, to require the town to go in, whether, if the town was providing the sanitation service, the town to go in and pick those up, or that 15 people would take their garbage can, wheel it out to the side of the street, and based on where they're at, basically would mean that they'd have to put them on the sidewalk, which would mean the kids now got to walk around the garbage cans. So I think having a designated dumpster spot, you know, that, that meets all the health department requirements addresses a lot of the safety and health concerns there. I mean, where are you going to put 15 garbage cans on garbage day, you know? And if they are there, the kids will be walking in the street to get around them. But the rodents would be a huge issue, and the fact that just the cleanliness and the, you know, the public health would be compromised by not having that dumpster space there. But those, those are the kind of, so those are the things, whenever we decide we want to discuss it, however, I'll leave that to you, Mr. Chairman. But however, we get to that point, that I would want to see incorporated into this application in order for me to approve it.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you want to add any further comments? Then we can start.
Mr. Francis, isn't that, down that street, was there no parking signs along there? On that side street that leads into the school? Well, I'm just concerned that, you know, like if the overflow, they start parking on the street, you know, for the residents that live there. Plus you've got buses, I believe, going in and out of there. If you've got kids walking, it's going to be a nightmare. That's why I was wondering if there are no parking.
There are no parking signs all along Foch.
Okay.
And the inlet going into the school.
Okay.
And I think, I remember, I may have asked on it, maybe I didn't, but I think whenever we've done one of these projects, we've pretty much made it clear that we expect residents will be parking in their designated areas and not on street. And I think we've made it clear in the discussion that they cannot park on Honey Spot. It's not lined for it. It's, it's too dangerous to do that. And we can't have them going onto Foch, so I think.
Well, they could technically park in front of the residence house on Foch.
Yeah, which we don't want that to happen either. Right. So without the accommodation of appropriate parking for the area, it's not going to work, you know.
And that parking lot, when I tell you from the teachers' parking, it's beyond full. Like I said, they're parking on the grass. So if a resident's living there after the teachers have gone, they're going to be there, the visitors, you know, boyfriends, girlfriends that might not live there. You know, they're going to park in that parking lot. And that's going to be right at the building, because they decided to have the parking lot in the front instead of the back, which would be kind of part of the, well, near and adjacent to the current parking lot. Which I don't think aesthetically, that looks cool to have a parking lot in the front of your building right there. I don't know if we can, you know, suggest that and change that stairway not facing the main street. Because that, I mean, like Commissioner Hendrick said, it's not the best-looking building. And have the stairway, outside stairway facing one of the main streets that, you know, anybody that's visiting Stratford comes off the highway, like, oh, what the heck is that? Looks like a mini jail.
We don't want that, no.
But it also creates significant safety issues with, with anybody being able, I know they said they had a screening there, but, I mean, anybody with a razor knife can slice it, walk in. It just creates a lot of public, public safety issues for, for the public and for the residents. I don't, I don't see it as a very safe environment from the way they've got it designed.
And there are some undesirables right across the street at that motel there. And that was one of my other issues. I mean, that, that, that place is a problem. It's been a problem for a while now. And I don't know if they know this area, which they, I don't know if they really do. But if somebody comes here to, doesn't really know the area, or somebody that does know the area, they're not going to rent there. All right? Or somebody coming there, here from somewhere else, they're going to say, you know, oh, this is crazy. I thought Stratford was, you know, a nice suburban town, and I got, I got to look out my window, and this is what I got to see. Now, unfortunately, some of the residents, they bought their houses and didn't know that, but that's, I mean, now you've, you've got an investment in the asset. So, you know, basically, you're, you've got to keep 911 on speed dial for, for instances that might happen or occur. But these people are renting. That place will be like a revolving door. And what do you think is going to happen after that when there's people not renting that place? So that's also what's in the back of my mind.
Okay. So, shall we take up the parking? Okay.
So I'll, I'll let you propose, but I would like to see, you know, 1.5 spaces.
1.5?
Which is 22 and a half, which equates to 23.
23. What did we do with 1111? What did that have?
That was before my time, unfortunately. I don't, I don't recall what the parking requirement was there.
That was a TOD, so they had a slightly different calculation on it.
It might be, well, that was actually the TCD. It was what was the predecessor to the TOD. The TOD requires, I believe, one and a quarter spaces per unit. And I can pull it up. I'm looking right now, section seven.
At transit-oriented, we, we did reduce the parking.
Yeah. It's not quite 1.5?
And I'm looking it up right now in the TOD for parking. One space for each dwelling unit containing an efficiency or one bedroom, an additional 0.25 for each, each. 0.25 for each bedroom in excess of one bedroom. So that was one for one. And let me just read a little bit further to make sure there wasn't any additional indoor parking.
Guest parking.
No regard parking in the front yard, parking financial institutions, requirements of offices, restaurants.
One per unit?
So it's one per efficiency, per section 7.10, one space for each dwelling unit containing an efficiency or a one bedroom, and an additional 0.25 for anything more than an efficiency, anything more than a one bedroom.
So it's actually the same, but, and there was no guest parking provisions in there?
No. No guest parking.
They also did have the street.
They did have the street, and that was a much, that was a little bit of a different situation. This is much more compact. What do you think? 1.5, 1.25? Just a straight up?
One, one?
Or a straight up guest parking?
One per one with two guest parking, 17 spaces.
I believe we should definitely suggest they have some guest parking. I mean, like you said, there's no way in the world you're going to tell me that nobody can have.
No one's going to be there.
And part of the transit oriented district is also to promote alternate means of transportation. So I know the administration had a comment about, you know, requiring the bike racks as part of that as well, so.
I mean, I think seven might be excessive, but what?
So at 1.5 for 15 units, we're looking at 23 parking spaces, as Commissioner Hendrick stated. And then 15 spaces times 1.25 is 19 spaces. So an additional four spaces.
For guests.
For guests. And, I mean, typical, I mean, you see in traditional development. This is not traditional development, just reminding everyone, state statute, 10 percent. So, 10 percent.
1.5, that's two. So it's basically two or four that we can do with. Two sounds too small, four sounds about like right in the zone.
That's 1.25.
Yeah.
19 spaces.
Yep. So, so we do amend section 31.10.1, one bedroom, 1.25 parking spaces per unit, which would allow us to have guests, four guest spots.
I would second that.
Okay.
Reason being, alleviating.
Yeah, for the, to foster public health and safety by ensuring that there is adequate parking, that parking will not be permitted on Foch Street or Honey Spot Road. Or on grass, or on the Honey Spot School property. Because that's, that's, that's almost an invitation for that to happen. Yeah.
But there is no, it's different from some of the other ones we looked at, which offer some off-road or off-site parking on the street. This, there is, that is not available, so it's not like an option. So they would, and, you know, the school, the school starts filling up at 7:30 in the morning. You know, if they're parking across the street, they're taking away spaces, and then the teachers aren't going to be able to go to work, the kids are going to have to, you know, so it just creates, it creates a health, a health, a safety issue. If we don't require at least some additional form of parking.
Okay. So the amendment in front of you, gentlemen, is to modify section 31.10.1 to bring it to 1.25 parking spaces per unit. And that effect of that is, in addition, four spots worth of guest parking. And it was made by me, seconded by Mr. Hendrick, so is there a discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Mr. Chairman, it also.
31.1, 31.10.1. Okay.
So I, and the other part was the dumpster space?
Dumpster, you are correct.
And I don't know if that's part of their text amendment, or?
Uh, let me look.
I have notes that say there's going to be five large garbage cans. I don't know what that means. That's what I have.
I mean, typically, our health director requires a dumpster site, a dumpster location, you know, a secured gated, not gated, but has surroundings. And that's, I think, a typical request of our health department, and it's been based on years of, of, you know, experience, that, you know, the best way to alleviate rodent populations and safety issues is to use that type of a.
Okay. So there's not, it's not actually written in here, which is interesting, that I can see it. So what I would probably suggest, there is a mention here, I love these, "There shall be no burning of garbage, refuge, or debris." So maybe since, in that, that section, section 31.12, we'll add a section D. "A dumpster of sufficient size for 15 dwelling units shall be placed on the property."
To, to, to meet the requirements or recommendations of the health director?
Yes, as, for, yeah, the health directors recommend, health department's directors' recommendations for safe and clean removal of refuges.
I don't think they made any recommendations.
They didn't, okay.
However, the commission can still say that the 15, 15 or five garbage cans rolling around the street are going to pose a public safety issue. Therefore, the commission is requesting a dumpster and enclosure to be installed. And you can do that in the text amendment, or you can do that as just a condition of approval as the site plan review.
I'm doing on both. I, I think it's got to be in the reg.
A non-visible containment, so, you know, like enclosed.
Enclosed. A dumpster enclosed.
What section is that?
I'm going to say, put it under 31.12. I'm going to add a new section D. Since that's, section C talks about garbage, I figure we'll throw it in there. More garbage in there.
And I think the health department has typical standard stipulations regarding refuse removal or refuse enclosures regarding to dumpsters, so.
They usually will, that's usually one of their comments.
Yeah. And, and my biggest concern with that, as I had stated before, is having those garbage cans there, you know, with the small size of the space would require, especially if the town's going to remove the refuse, the town, they would need to wheel those out onto the, out onto the street, which would have to be probably Foch Street, which would mean the sidewalks would be blocked because there's limited space there as it is, which would create a, another safety issue, you know, for, for the children attending school or whatever it may be. So it goes beyond just sanitation, it's a public safety issue as well. So, you know, that, that has to be a safe, self-contained removal process, where they're not pushing it out to the sidewalk and causing the kids to walk in oncoming traffic, whereas they try to get to school in the morning.
Chairman Solhavy, just a recommendation, as we're making some of these amendments, having a collective decision and maybe some agreement with our, with our other commissioners, even if it's, we, just some acknowledgement that there's, this is a collective decision, I think might be helpful.
That is correct. We will note, the, Mr. Bansky is making reference to a recent, last year, court ruling that we had, and the courts are very interested to make sure that all commissioners are collectively deciding these issues, not loud mouths like me, sort of, you know, monopolizing. So, you know, we're offering this, and we're, we have an amendment in, on the, in front of the commission here, so, you know, please, by all means, add in your thoughts if, you know, we're on the right track here, and if you, you think that, I think, I think we're coming around to some things, that we've had two amendments passed already, and so this is the third one in front of us, but please offer your thoughts here. You guys have, everybody here has, has an equal voice on this board.
Well, quickly, just not to be, you know, lack for a better word, I mean, term, beat a dead horse, but our regulations coincide with the regulations of the 830G, right? Correct? No?
No.
Yeah, because I was going to say here, it says, "All such affordable housing shall be developed in a fashion that generally consists with the housing patterns of the neighborhood in which it is located." That's unaffordable housing.
It's in, it's in, it's in the zoning regulations.
Yes.
Yeah. That was the town's effort to try to create its own regulation to, to guide people to, to do affordable housing the way that we want. However, it's nowhere near as attractive or developer friendly as Attorney Sullivan mentioned, as the statute itself.
Our friends in Hartford.
I've never seen anyone utilize that.
I think what the chairman was alluding to was, at the moment, we're discussing the dumpster, the placement of a dumpster in, placed within an enclosure, and he was encouraging all members to comment on it, to, the dumpster specifically, to comment on it, to satisfy the judge's request made at an earlier, at a previous application. So your comments are somewhat mandatory at this point on the dumpster.
Especially if your last name begins with the letter V.
With as simple as, and I'll, and I'll leave, I'll let Attorney Sullivan chime in and add more, but with as simple as, I agree with the concerns regarding the, and I'm not just looking at you, Commissioner Ficole, for everybody, I agree with, you know, the comments that the dumpster, not having a dumpster enclosure creates a public safety issue. So I agree. Or I disagree. You know?
I agree, as Commissioner Ficole. Here's the thing, I've seen all these buildings, but where do you have a building with 15 units or whatever units with garbage cans?
Yeah.
You know, it's always been dumpsters, dumpster enclosed, to handle that much refuge. So I'm for the dumpster and put that on record.
And to address any health and safety concerns, I agree that a dumpster would be a better option than any, than requiring every resident to have a garbage can. So the major concern being the health and safety of the residents and the surrounding neighbors.
And just to make sure, we're going to put into that amendment that it has to be some kind of mechanism where it's not like Mr. Commissioner Hendrick said, that it's not getting pulled into the street where the kids are walking, and it's an obstruction, and there's safety issues there concerning the kids also.
Okay, so let's make sure we get the language down correctly. So I had said that there shall be a, an enclosed.
A dumpster of sufficient size and units be placed on.
Sufficient size and capacity to accommodate a 15-unit.
15-unit development and shall be enclosed.
Enclosed.
And adhere to any health department standards that may be applicable. Okay? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, say, try your minds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Aye.
Here's five. Yeah, Mr. Hendrick did. Yeah.
And then, and then the other issue was the, the qualified affordable.
Yeah, let's handle that one. Because that we need, that I think we really need to handle. And let me see if I can find. There was an area, I'm just trying to see if they talk specifically about affordability. Okay. Section B, 31.3.2B, "An affirmative fair housing marketing plan governing the rental of all dwelling units." "The applicant shall submit the following," and that was one of them. "A description of the projected sequence of workforce units will be built and afforded for occupancy, the general location, draft lease provisions that govern the workforce units." I think that's probably ripe for a section F, right there, that would say something along the lines of.
So, so it also, in the?
A? Okay. Oh, okay, good call.
They're halfway there.
They're halfway there.
Yeah.
It just needs to say, someone selected, someone, affordability person needs, I'm sorry, I don't want.
It, it, it says, it says, "A list of qualified affordable managers which has been provided by the Connecticut Department of Housing can be attained in the Stratford office." So something along the lines, "A qualified affordability manager shall be picked from the list provided by the Connecticut Department of Housing and, and approved by the zoning
Is that a motion, Mr. Hendrick?
That's a motion.
Ah, good. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Francis.
And again, Mr. Chairman, since, you know, the whole, the whole point of, of this application is, is to create all affordable units, we want to ensure that that is, that piece of the pie is solved or resolved, so that it'll be followed, that that's a critical piece of this, this application. And we want to make sure that it's done correctly and appropriately, and that it's not just some guy they pick off the street, but actually somebody who is on the list that was provided by the Connecticut Department of Housing, and someone who has been approved by the zoning administrator. He's had a lot of experience with these applications, and, and I'm quite certain knows which are the most qualified and able to perform that duty.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. That was a very strange part of the public hearing, when there was the discussion and they were saying that, you know, oh yeah, well, we, we'll, we'll get people and, and, you know.
Find somebody.
We'll find somebody. And, you know, you just got to be realistic here, that there's, you know, as much as we, we don't like the methods of the affordable housing, we're talking about people that are in need of a quality life, living in a place, and they have to be treated fairly, and they have to make sure that they are take, they are getting the benefits that this state program, it's under, under the auspices of state statutes, you know, purports to provide, and who better to ensure that than the people who are actually recommended by the State Department of Housing? It seems like it should not be a question, to be honest with you. So I would definitely be in favor of that. And then it puts our mind at ease that this is going to be maintained and, you know, go up to all of its regulation, its requirements. So I would support that.
Mr. Bansky, really quick question.
Please, sir.
Now, does, also, does this statute also supersede? Does it also supersede the apartment unit equivalent, also?
Yes, it does. Supersedes all of the zoning regulations. And maybe I shouldn't say all, I think all of them, other than maybe regulations that have to do with public health and safety.
Basically, that's it. It is not a health and safety issue.
And preservation of maybe the, the environment, like wetlands. And it has to be quantifiable. It can't be, well, there's a possibility of, of a danger, yet it has to be more than a likelihood, I believe, is what the language says, or what maybe the case law says.
Further comments on our proposed amendment?
Mr. Chairman, before, just before we go on. What is the likelihood, just for some of the people in the audience, what is the likelihood that we are going to be discussing or voting on the outdoor entertainment text amendment this evening?
If you want my personal opinion, based on the discussion that we had during the public hearing, I would like to take, make some amendments to that. And it would probably be best if we're, we don't do it like on the fly, sort of what we're doing tonight. I think it would be better to write those out and be able to talk it through, because obviously, there's a lot of concern. We also are going to try to at least start Surf Avenue, that's going to probably take a fair amount of time.
So for the folks in the audience that are waiting to hear, more than likely, we would be discussing and voting on it at the next meeting?
I would probably say there's a high likelihood, and what time is it? I don't even know what time it is.
I just.
Usually we start, oh, it's 9:30. Yeah, I would say there, I would say that we will not be voting on outdoor dining and entertainment tonight. I think by the time we get through this, we're in part one of three, and then we're going to go through the other ones, we're just basically going to run out of time, and we have another meeting that's going to be on December 8th.
So that'll be taken up on December 8th?
I believe we'll take it up on December 8th, just so that if people.
You guys are welcome to stay and listen to the rest of it, but if you're here just for that?
Yeah, you might want to take off. That's an excellent point, Mr. Hendrick. Sorry, we have a lot of stuff to go through, and as you know, our, this zoning commission wraps up at the end of the year, so we're trying to get through everything really quickly, and these are complicated petitions, as you may have noticed.
But we love the audience, and if you want to stay, you're more than welcome.
Yep. Yep. Thank you. Appreciate your patience. No, this one, we're, this one, we're, we're, we're working on this one. Okay. Um, so we still have the amendment on the floor? Any, uh, further comments before we call for a vote on the amendment? Um, this one, can you guys give a, yep?
We will need comments.
So, I have an amendment to section thirty-one point ten point one for the text amendment, the, and I don't have the exact, exact language.
Thirty-one point three point two A?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one point three point two.
And then you said subsection A. Designation of a person.
Oh, I thought you wanted me to read all of them back.
No.
Just the one that you guys are talking about.
Just the one that's on the-
Thirty-one point three point two subsection A.
Yep.
Um, "The applicant shall pick from a list provided by the, from the Office of Planning and Zoning of Affordability Manager," I haven't written it all out, but I have a-
From, from, the list, a list provided from the Connecticut Department of Housing that can be, uh, and, and approved by the zoning administrator. From a, from a list provided by-
Works for me.
Jay, quick question. That was, uh, required at the public hearing, right? You had mentioned that to the applicant.
Well, I'd recommended to the zoning, to the commission, that that should be a condition of, should the board approve it, that should be a condition of approval.
Yep.
Or amendment made in the text.
Yep, and have the professionals that just deal with something like that.
Otherwise, W2 start getting dropped off in my office, and I'm starting to look at people's income records, which I am not qualified to do.
Okay, further comments?
Um, now, was there also an amendment about them, um, amending the forty-foot setback of the front and thirty-five foot from the side?
Uh, we gotta go through the, uh, just gotta vote on this particular one regarding this one, and then we'll go up to the next, the next one. Okay, so all in favor of that amendment regarding the, the manager, if you will? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? Carries unanimously. Now, if you wanna bring that up again.
Um, I, it's just so much stuff, I was going through so quickly, so forgive me.
No worries.
Um, but there was also an amendment that they wanted to suggest to change our required setbacks from the sides from thirty-five feet, and from the front, the front, forty feet is, I think, our requirements. And they, they wanted to amend, amend that, correct? Am I correct on that?
They are proposing a zone that has setbacks that are unlike in any other zone. The coverage, the front setbacks, the side, the, all the setbacks are, it's a new zone with all new setbacks and coverage requirements. If they're not amending it for one section, they're creating a whole new section with all new setbacks, which is with all, every one of these affordable housing projects that I've seen here in the seven years, that's exactly how they do it.
So, they pretty much have no guidelines, no, they, they just get and put, and play, like-
They make the setbacks, whatever, the, the, for, whatever works for the project.
And that's allowed to them through the eight-thirty G process?
Correct.
I mean, but in doing that, I mean, you create, you create safety issues, you create un, un, uh, you know?
You all have to make that determina- maybe it does. You have to make that determination.
I mean, I couldn't believe, I mean, with, with a lot of this information that I've obtained, I mean, I think we can create a situation where this, this, this will create a hindrance on the community as well as a safety issue, and, and especially with it being as close as, um, about thirty-five feet from an elementary school. I mean, it's literally thirty-five feet. When it could, with a street that was never built for traffic, but to trap kids off and for teachers to enter. That's what that street was built for. I remember there weren't no houses there. It was just a street to get into the school. That was it. Not even a pass-through. You couldn't even just pass through.
Can't stop eight-thirty G.
Well, if it's, if it's safety, is it, is a safety issue to, to minors, yes, you could stop that.
Hey, that, but, yeah.
I had an interruption. I think, and I'm sorry if I'm being too much of a participant here as opposed to a staff member.
Participation as well.
Yeah, there has to be more than a mere possibility. And this, you know, Attorney Sullivan can correct me, but this is what I believe I've read in much of the case law, there has to be more than a mere possibility, um, for there, for it to be proven that there is a public safety concern that outweighs the need for affordable housing.
And I think if, when you're looking at the amendment to the regulations, the, the most important thought in my mind is, could it land somewhere else? Or is it really, as Jay just said, you know, these are really designed, um, you know, they sort of build the project and then they figure out what the regulation is, as I said before. In general, it's so that they can, they can have a conforming project to take to, you know, for financing. So, um, because otherwise, the regulation is completely unnecessary. What eight dash thirty G says is, bring in whatever you want, and then unless the commission can find some health and safety issues, then when we go to court, the burden shifts to us to say why you can't do this and not where, the way it normally is, which is, you know, as long as the commission has acted, um, reasonably, then the, you know, the burden is, the burden is on the applicant to prove what the commission did wrong. In an affordable housing case, that burden flips. So, we have to write first, we have to, you know, prove why you did something, as opposed to, to the normals, you know, position that we're in. So, if you, if you're thinking, you know, sometimes people will come in and change your regulations, say, "I wanna change your entire regulation so that side setbacks are four feet where they're usually twenty." Well, you know, that's a regulation you'd be really concerned about, because it's gonna, it's gonna land in a bunch of different places, and you can't even determine what its effect might be. So, what you're looking at now is this regulation for this property. It's not a general change to your regulations, it's just a sort of one-off for this property.
Thank you. One thing, if I might digress for a minute, I noticed here that in section three point, thirty-one point five, subsection B, I guess there's a second place where they mention the parking ratio, and it says one point one. Um, to be consistent, I think we should change that to one, to one point two-five. So, I'll just make that amendment, that should be, to be consistent with our earlier change in section thirty-one point ten point one. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Second, Mr. Henrick? Any further discussion? This is just to be the same reasons that we did the other one, as far as making sure that there's adequate parking on site and not having the cars park on Foch Street or Honey Spot Road? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Carries unanimously.
And then, Mr. Chairman, we had also, um, three, thirty-one point eight point one, um, it, it, they haven't, I don't know that they have-
Ooh, good catch.
-shown that it is compliant with the MS four storm water management plan, the Town of Stratford's MS four storm water management plan. Has, has that been addressed through them, or?
The applicant has said they complied, but to ensure, you could either add it in here, the project in section thirty-one point eight point one, or thirty-one point eight point four, the project, "All projects shall comply with the Town of Stratford's MS four storm water permit."
Yep.
Or you add it as a condition of approval in the site plan review section.
You want, since we're hitting it, all right, so then thirty-one point eight point one should say that the, um, the, the applicant must show that, that the site complies with the Town of Stratford's MS four storm water management plan, uh, with reviews with the town engineer.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment, Mr. Vacole? Further discussion? I think this is becoming our, I mean, this is a standard requirement right now for all of these things, correct?
It is.
Yes.
And usually, as opposed, in the, a lot of the conversations with the town engineer have gone into this template, and it, what we usually will say is, "The applicant shall provide a letter from a licensed engineer ensuring the project complies with the, with the, um, with the prod, complies with MS four storm water permit," which we will review, but essentially putting the engineer's license on the line by drafting the letter. That's what the, our town engineer was more comfortable with.
Okay.
As opposed to him saying, getting a bunch of plans dropped off and having to spend two weeks reviewing, "This complies."
Okay, so then my amendment would be that the, the, the applicant will provide a letter from a, from a certif, from a-
License.
Licensed engineer showing compliance with the, the town's MS four storm water management plan and submitted to the town engineer for his review.
Okay, and you agree with the text, Mr. Vacole?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Um, further discussion, this one should be pretty non-controversial.
Which, Mr. Chairman, this is-
Yes, sir.
This is just a standard stipulation with all of our projects, so it's not requesting anything special or out of the ordinary, so, um, it should've been done prior to the application being submitted perhaps, but it hasn't been, so I wanna ensure that going forward, they're aware of it and that they meet that standard town requirement.
Mr. Vigliotti?
Well, I, I'm just pointing out, this, this booklet says storm water management for, so I'm just assuming that this might be it, or I get it.
Now, let's make sure, is that it, or is that the, or is that-
Well, they made, this is the storm water, this is their storm water-
Plan?
Study.
Okay.
Report.
Study, yep.
And in here, and I don't recall, as we're a few months past since I've read through this two-hundred-page document, but I'm pretty sure they mention in here the project complies. However, a letter from a licensed engineer helps us fulfill our requirements in reporting to the state of Connecticut with, for our MS four permit, so I take these letters, I save them, and I have to send them to the state. So, we want that letter anyways.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Carries unanimously. Um-
We have, I have, uh, one second. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Three point one point six, density. Says the density of the HSHZ shall be no more than eighteen units?
E, that's a great quan, and I almost forgot about that, because in the original draft, it said eighteen, I was told that it was amended or cleaned up to say fifteen, but yet I don't have that text in my possession.
And the applicant did acknowledge that it was changed. Uh, the affordability plan says fifteen, the plans say fifteen, doesn't say fifteen.
Tell you what, let's be on the safe side here.
Yep.
Uh, would you care to make an amendment, Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'd like to make amendment to, uh, what's it, where was I just at? Uh, three point-
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one point six.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to amend it, saying that this will be no more than fifteen units.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti? Okay. Discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
It's just, it's, it's just a, a standard clerical cleanup, you know, that's what they proposed, and they're, they're-
Yeah, they, um-
So, it's not, it's not a, it's not anything, it's not a request or anything special, it's just, that's what they requested, and, and we're just cleaning up their cler clairs.
Also, we identified this already?
It, it was identified, be, and, I'm shaking right here, it circled right on my text, because it caught my eye. Um, and they said, they admitted that it was a typo in there, they've always proposed fifteen, it's fifteen in there, but for the sake of adoption of the regulation, to make sure it's clean, I think it's prudent to adopt the amendment so that there is no doubt.
I thought they were trying to be slick.
Nah, well, sneak in the three in there when no one's looking? You never know. Yep. Eagle eyes. You're looking for something? Okay. Any, uh, further comments on the amendment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Carries unanimously. Okay. Um, any further amendments to the regulation? This is probably the most we've ever done. Jeez.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, uh, propose another amendment about the bike racks, did we put that in play, or no? Since they're promoting, um, you know, uh, no vehicles in transportation, they should have the equivalent of bike racks to compare to their units?
Okay, let me, give me one minute, there was a comment and a response on that one, let me just see what they say. It's not in the reg.
I believe they added, and I have to look at the revised plan here, they did not offer the recommended one per one.
They did offer something, it was nine or something like that.
I can tell you right now. One, two, three, four, five. They offered five.
Um, okay.
I, I would like to propose they at le, have, at least have half of what they have in the unit, at least.
Okay, so, what, eight? Uh, let me see here. There you go, that's half. Uh, let's see here, where can we put this? Um-
In the parking section.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Thirty-one point ten.
Make it a thirty-one point ten point six?
Thirty-one point ten.
Unless you can find a better place to put it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we'll, uh, propose an amendment, thirty-one point ten point six. There shall be bike racks, eight bike racks located on the property. Bike rack that can accommodate eight bicycles. Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Vacole? Okay. Discussion? Probably a prudent thing if they're-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, it, the town has a, a requirement for bike, bicycles storage, the, um, the applicant proposed this as, as a, you know, transit-oriented type establishment, and offering alternate means, so requiring at least half to have, you know, access to bicycle storage, being the size of the units being small, um, would seem prudent, it would, it would allow for less reliability on cars and, and help promote what they proposed to accomplish here, which was to, uh, offer alternate means of transportation.
And I believe that it would actually help them, since the units are smaller units, it prevents them from having to store it in their units to, uh, uh, have less room in those units.
That's true, and if, you know, there are younger children there, they might have bicycles, which would be hard to store anyplace else on the property, quite honestly, and if they're left in the parking lot, that could jeopardize safety, um, so it's probably a prudent thing to add on to the complex. And I think that's consistent with what we've done with, was it the former Christchurch property, did we require it on those? If I remember correctly, if I might cite precedent, which I will?
I believe they provided parking-
They provided, yeah.
They provided parking based on earlier studies that office had done, but the commission hadn't quite adopted.
I, I think they provided both outdoor and indoor bicycle storage.
Now, I'm gonna go. Okay. Any further comments on the amendment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Carries unanimously.
As far as amendments, I think that's all I had. It seems like we've, you know, done quite a bit-
Yeah.
-here to, to make some improvements or adjustments to it, and I would be comfortable with, you know, voting on the text change as-
The underlying bill?
As amended.
Yep. Okay, further discussion on the ord, on the proposed regulation as amended by the, what are we, seven amendments, I think, that we did tonight?
And this is just on the text amendment.
Just on the text amendment, we're not talking about the applic, actual application, this is literally just the, what will become, should it be adopted, the regulation in section five of the, of the bound copy, um, and its pages one through four, with addition to the amendments that we proposed. Um, just to round out the, the debate- Just to round out the debate, I think I tend to agree with a lot of the comments that have been made about the limitations of this site, um, and, you know, the developers came through, they asked what, they told us what they wanted, and it's our responsibility acting in our legislative capacity, which we are doing right now, that's why this is a little sloppy, but that's part of our job, to say under what conditions we would find this acceptable. I really wish we could rely on the precedents that, the, you know, the character arguments that are there, it seems extremely large for that area, but eight thirty G is, you know, it's a very painful regulation, uh, statute, and, you know, I think we're doing a good faith effort here of, all the amendments I've heard tonight are all reasonable, and they're designed specifically to make sure that public health and safety is maintained, and if that's the burden they're gonna put onto the town for adopting this, then I think the changes that we've made here are reasonable and prudent for that. You know, there was unfortunately not a lot of substantial evidence presented that we could use, so I think we've create, taken something that was not perfect and made it a little better, and, you know, it's up to everybody's decision to see if we move forward with this, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Another comment, too, I mean, I think all the, all the proposals we've made are based on public safety and health concerns, um, we haven't done anything that, that, uh, pretty much, although, we haven't done anything that was based on emotion or fear, I think it's all been done on common sense, and, and they all relate to public safety and health concerns, so I think, I think what we did was, as you stated, was prudent, and, and it was in the, it was in the, it was with the public's interest in mind, you know, we wanna make sure that we don't have kids getting run over in the street, we don't wanna make sure that, you know, we don't have rats running around, that it's a safe place, we wanna make sure, you know, by incorporating the qualified affordability manager, that they, it, it is an affordable unit, and it maintains that way, and that they follow the criteria laid out by the state, by somebody who's qualified to do that, so I think all of the, all of the things we've added were purely public safety and, and health, and, and we didn't venture out beyond those parameters, so I, I think we, hopefully it satisfied, you know, the eight thirty G requirements in, in, in what we've done.
Yeah, I also believe that, you know, we, we didn't lead with, you know, emotions in, and we dedicated our due diligence to the health and safety of our community and the town's respectable amount of concerns that, that come with that. This was more of a commission that worked together just to make sure that, you know, a property like this doesn't just come in and, and just, you know, do anything they want because the statute lets them, but they have to, actually have to be accountable for the safety of that area, and not just build something that they just know that they can conform to what they want. So I think that the commission did a good job of putting these, putting these amendments in place to make them accountable for, for, for the health and safety of the community in that area.
Okay. Further discussion on the regulation as amended?
Major concerns of mine were the sidewalks, having someone reliable that was gonna manage the residents to be able to live there, and the stormwater runoff, and I think we addressed those three things in, in a fair and prudent way, so I, I think that, I think that we're doing our job to represent the interests of the town, and also try our best to get this project, you know, completed.
I'm getting tired, I'm getting old, I'm getting old. Um, no, I just, as a commission, we all work together on this, it's nice to see that we all could work together and fine tune some of these points, and, you know, recommend and see what happens. You know, like I said, I am too, for health and safety of the town, as a former police officer, with the walking on the streets and the cars, the traffic, so I'm happy to see that, putting that sidewalk forward and finding out that there's no parking signs there, because I know that traffic could be hectic over there, so I'm just happy the commission worked together to get these points across.
Okay, so let's go to a roll call vote, Mr. Vigliotti?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Bacola?
Aye.
Mr. Henrik?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, the regulation passes as amended, five zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, the next, the next application, or I guess the next, the next thing on the agenda would be vessel technologies site plan review and change of a zone from CA to a proposed, proposed HSHZ zone, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Henrik, is there a second? Mr. Bacola, discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I think we've, we've kinda discussed the finer points of this, and incorporated most of those in, I mean, I, we could reiterate those points, but I think they, they kinda stand on their own based on our, our previous discussion, I don't know that we need to go into a deep dive again, I would just say that for, for all of the reasons that we discussed regarding the text amendment change, I would be in favor of, of the site plan review. The only, I guess the only comment I would ask was, the ARB really would, would deal with, with the aesthetics of the building, and, and I don't know, as an eight thirty G, we have the ability to make any changes to that?
So, the ARB did not provide comments for this application, they felt that because it was a prefab development, any comments they had would completely change the entire development and would require them to come back. So they said they couldn't, they appreciated the commission's referral, but they couldn't provide enough, any comments for you all to consider.
Okay, so, so based on that, because the, you know, the ARB had no comments or amendments to the site plan, and based on the reasonings we gave with the text change, I would be in favor of approving this section.
So, just one procedural question, because the, the site plan that was presented probably does not conform to what we just passed two minutes ago, so how do we, how do we do this?
Yeah, I think what you do is, if you're going to approve the text amendment-
Which we did.
At, conditionally, with, with amendments.
Which we did.
You approve the zone change-
Okay.
For its consistency with the plan of conservation and development with the amendments that have been made.
Mm-hmm.
And then you make your way to now the site plan review, which, if the commission decides they're going to approve that with, because of its consistency with the plan of conservation and development, with the amendments made, and any other conditions of approval that didn't neatly fit within the text amendments. So you're essentially approving the site plan based on your amendments, amendments made to the regulations.
Okay, so do they have to submit a revised-
Attorney Sullivan chime in if she has other-
So do they have to rescind the revised site plan to you that shows that they have the sidewalks, they have the correct parking on the rest of it, because that's not in there right now?
So I would look at this as three parts, the first part is the adoption of the regulation, the second part is the change of the, of the existing zone on the property to the new zone.
Okay.
And then the third would be approving a site plan that is in conformance with the, the change in, the, the new zone on that property, which is consistent with the amended regulation that you just passed, so, you know, I think you would wanna see a site plan that, that is in conformance with the regulation.
So that would have to be a stipulation, provided that they provide one that conforms to the revised text?
Right, yeah.
For, and, and, you know, I could always bring it back to the commission for review, however, you could always stipulate that the applicant shall, and this is in the site plan review section, the applicant shall provide an amended site plan showing conformance with the amended text amendment, and any other conditions of approval for zoning commission's review, or the planning and zoning administrator's review, to ensure that everything has been, has been done, however you all want it to be.
All right, so tell you what, let's procedurally, let's move on to the, the, yeah, I know, I wish I brought some with me. Let's move on to the zone change for the property, that would be the second part there.
Right, and that's, that's where we are.
That's where we are right now, okay.
So, so the zone change would, would incorporate, so, so the zone change would incorporate the amendments to the, to the text, and?
Mm-hmm, okay. So the motion, just to state it, is to change the zone of three thirteen Honey Sprout Road from CA to the proposed HS, or to the adopted and amended HSHZ property, zone, which was just adopted by the zoning commission, and that was by Mr. Henrik, was there a second on that one, Gail? Mr. Bacola?
And that was, is dedicated to that property of three thirteen Honey Spot, correct?
Correct, this was just to change three thirteen Honey Spot to the new one that we just debated and adopted.
So, so-
Mr. Vigliotti, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the only, so the difference to the original motion would be that vessel technologies Inc. site plan review change zone from a CA zone to the amended and adopted, to the newly amended and adopted HSHZ.
Correct, yep, okay, that's what's in front of us, guys.
Just a point, is this the RM one, is that?
No, CA.
Okay.
Are you serious?
Where?
It says, change from a RM one zone to a HSZH, HSHZ zone.
Hey, Dan, you oughta go tell them what we're doing.
It's a CA zone, so-
You oughta go tell them.
It's a C- Did Chris go somewhere? So when they submitted it, they put RM one zone, I determined after doing my review, it was actually a CA zone. Yeah, yeah. I had the same heart attack. Yeah, so, so when the applicant submitted their application, they indicated it was in an RM one zone, upon my review, and you'll see that I mentioned it down here, it's act- it's a CA zone, so, changing from a CA zone to an HSHZ zone.
H, okay.
Newly amended and adopted.
Newly amended and adopted. Okay.
And for its, because now that it's been amended-
Correct, so-
It's now consistent.
And so, yeah, yeah, I know, should've ordered dinner, or breakfast, or whatever. Yeah, so, so in order, so now that this has been adopted, in order to be in conformance with plan of conservation and development, and to foster the creation of the affordable housing within it, within the guidelines and limits that were adopted by this commission unanimously a few minutes ago, we should adopt this to actually commit this and make the Any further discussion? If not, all in favors?
Because it's now consistent?
Yes, we have now brought it into conformance.
And so, um, but does this, is this including the stipulation that they then provide a new site plan?
I think that's gonna be the next one part we'll do with, this is part two, just to take the change, and then, because then, I wanna make sure we do the site plan part correctly, so this is just doing the zone change.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
So, so it's a CA zone to a HSIZ, not a RM one?
Correct, yeah, while you stepped out of the room for a minute, we found out there was some, there was a lot of typos on this one.
So the applicant, on their original application, submitted it as an RM one, and so when we, as I did my review, and I mentioned it in the first paragraph, my staff commented, that it's actually a CA zone, not an RM one zone.
Good grief.
It's a CA zone.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously. Okay, so now, just walk me through how we're gonna do this one, because we don't have a site plan that conforms-
We're, we're gonna require everybody to sign a plan that, for it, uh-
That's consistent.
So we're gonna require them to provide a site plan that, that is consistent with the newly formed zone, and, and, and require it be reviewed by the zoning administrator before it's enacted upon by the applicant. Would that be correct?
I'm getting a yes. Yes.
Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I'm getting a yes.
All right, so-
The applicant shall submit a revised site plan that conforms with all the amendments made to the HSHZ zone by the zoning commission, period.
And reviewed, and reviewed by the zoning administrator to ensure conformity.
And rev, the last part?
Yeah.
And reviewed by the planning and zoning administrator to ensure compliance with the, conformity with the amended regulation.
I have a feeling we should listen into this tape again.
So, so that would be my motion, and my motion would be to approve.
Okay, the motion is by Mr. Henrik.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Francis. Further discussion, I think I'll add that because there were significant changes to it, you know, it's, it's now incumbent upon the applicant to submit something that shows us how this is, site's gonna work, it's a little bit different than what they envisioned, I understand that, but, you know, we've done what we're supposed to, and then we just will need to see how this is actually going to work, and to make sure that it conforms with what we've done here tonight, and that's the, and with our, any regulations, plan of conservation and development, to ensure that everything is consistent with what we did, and then we'll see the plan, and, and we'll leave it to Jay to make sure that it conforms. I, I do agree with Mr. Henrik, visually, it is not a pretty structure, I don't know that we can do anything about that, I think I'm more concerned with making sure that the, you know, this conforms to our health and safety changes that we've made at this point. Further discussion?
I, I just wanted to add that I do have some notes from that first meeting of some items I heard from the public, and I'll just read them back-
Sure, yeah, let's talk about this.
For any consideration. The first one I had was that privacy fence and/or landscaping should be provided along the parking lot to provide relief to the abutters, provide part, privacy and relief to the abutters, that tilt-down lighting shall be provided for all lighting in the parking lot, and that proper drainage should be installed to prevent water from negatively impacting any of the surrounding neighbors.
And would that, would that be incorporated in the MS four stormwater review, or?
No, that wouldn't, I mean, that, that's almost an implied civil matter, that you can't send water. You're probably right, Commissioner Henrik, and actually, you can't send stormwater off-site.
Right.
So I think you, I think that is covered, that third one, in the MS four requirement that you all added to the text amendment.
What was the verbiage on the greenery around?
So a privacy, that a privacy fence and/or landscaping be provided along the parking lot to provide privacy and relief to the abutters.
And then the tilt-down lighting.
And the tilt-down lighting is a requirement from the building department anyways.
Okay, so we don't need to have that in there?
You don't need, you don't need to state it.
Go ahead, Mr. Francis.
All right, thank you, I'd like to make an amendment to, that's the site plan also, correct?
Yes.
For the tilt-down lighting, oh, you said that's in it, already, the tilt-down lighting.
Part of the building code.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
But the privacy fence and, um-
But the privacy fence and the, um, the greenery around the parking lot to, around, I don't get the last part, around the abutters?
Privacy fence.
For privacy, yeah, privacy fence and greenery around the parking lot.
No drains, that's included in the MS4.
Privacy kind of landscaping.
And landscaping.
Along the rear of the parking lot to provide privacy and relief from the abutters.
And that, and that was based on comments from the public, correct?
Correct. And I think that's very important, to be honest with you. You know, I mean, it, it's tough living on a street that has as much traffic as Honey Sprout does, people coming in and out from the school, you know, obviously I know, and I, and I really do applaud the neighbors for, for, for being here throughout the thing and listening attentively and patiently. I know that it's, it's upsetting, but I think the most, it's extremely important for us to do what we can to ensure their privacy and the sanctity of their property as much as we can. I think that would help. So I would, I would support that.
Those, do I need a second there?
Oh, good point. Mr. Vicola, we'll give you that one second. Okay, further discussion on those amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think as you had stated, it's a, it's a small request to ensure, you know, quality of life and, and some form of privacy to the residents. Do I, I think, I, I think it's something that should easily be done, so.
Okay.
And I definitely agree because it says a dense area. That privacy will definitely come in handy because people's privacy are very important to them nowadays. I definitely agree.
Okay, all in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carries unanimously. Any further comments on the overall site plan review? I think we have, we've, I think we've adopted everything, we have everything in line right now. So they're going to come to you with the adopted site plan. Incorporate, we've incorporated the stipulations, so I think we're actually good to go at this point. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the petition as presented for the site plan approval, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a suggestion that we quick approve the minutes and go home.
I am so glad you brought, well, yeah, we're, we'll go through-
But before, before, we also have the sediment erosion control.
Yeah. I mean, guys, we got, according to our rules, we have, usually we try to wrap up by 11:00. I, I really don't feel like taking up the text amendment here.
We're, we're not going to have, I don't think we're going to be able to resolve it in a timely fashion, so I think we'd just be-
I'm a bit fried right now.
Yeah.
So we still have time. That one, we have until December 16th. So I think we're just going to leave that as is.
We have, we're not-
And I'll work with Jay on the schedule. We might have to see, we might have to, if we think we're going to get over, if we're going to have too much stuff on the 8th, we might have to see if we can squeeze in something-
When's our last day as, as a zoning-
One, one, I think.
The last day of December technically. You knew, as long as everybody's- As long as everybody's sworn in, it's January 1st is technically when the new commission-
For the week of Christmas, I'm not around.
Yeah. We're going to try to, if anything, we'd probably be looking at maybe, we're on the 8th next.
8th?
So if we had to squeeze one in, I'd probably be looking at the 1st, so it's like the week after Thanksgiving. But let's talk about that because I, I know we might have something coming from the planning commission on the 8th that could take some time.
The 8th, well, we could do the 8th or the 15th.
8th and the 15th, we could do that too.
And what I'll say is that council chambers is at a premium. Everyone is trying to get everything done in these first few weeks.
Well-
There may be a possibility that-
We do a remote meeting?
Just as the emergency plan. A remote, a remote meeting.
Right.
If we, if it's hard to get, to schedule time in the room.
Could we, could we, I mean, because there's no public hearing involved with it, could we go down to room 211 or whatever it is?
It would have, it has to be recorded.
Yeah. Yeah. It has to be videotaped.
Visual recording or audio?
I believe it's both.
Get a cameraman.
And we could always try something during the day. You know, I know everyone works.
All right, well, we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll let you know and obviously we won't schedule anything unless we talk to you guys and make sure we have a quorum. I need a quorum.
Or we'll just bring pillows on the 8th and plan for a long night.
Yeah, that's the other thing. We'll be like the old days in the, when they used to bring cots into the Senate.
Maybe we, maybe we even start earlier.
Because we, that's another option there, start earlier.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 27, 2021 meeting.
Uh, you want to do all three, September 20-
I-
Oh, I'm sorry, you are, you are correct. I'm, I'm, see, I'm already dyslexic. Okay, so motion to approve the minutes of the October 27, 21 meeting by Mr. Henrick. Is there a second? Mr. Vicola, any corrections, changes? Anything? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carries unanimously.
313 Honey Spot Road, Lot 14 Vessel Technologies Sediment Erosion Control Application.
Okay, you skipped over a few things. Do we have to do anything for Surf Avenue or do we do that?
Keep it on the table until-
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, leave that.
Motion to keep it on the table.
Okay, so sediment and erosion control, 313 Honey Spot Road and Lot 14 Vessel Technologies Inc. You said to approve the sediment and erosion control?
Do we have any comments on that?
Any comments on that?
So I do have comments. They were in my, part of our, my staff comments.
Oh.
And they are to recommend it. Should the commission approve, approve it with the standard conditions of approval or sediment erosion control, which I can read.
I, I can go through a quick one. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with the standard stipulations, all necessary siltation and erosion controls shall be in place and the zoning enforcement officer notified for inspection prior to any site construction work being performed. Immediate onsite modifications shall be employed with an erosion problem, when an erosion problem develops and evaluating the application is provided, so if any of the, if any of the information provided by the applicant proves to be inaccurate or incomplete, the approval may be modified, suspended, or rescinded. And the applicant shall submit a more detailed plan for fugitive dust control to be provided to the zoning enforcement officer prior to building demolition activities.
Those are some very well thought-out stipulations.
Take the whole piece.
It's like, you had him repaired. How'd that happen?
Yeah, that, yeah, that one you can-
Okay, is there a second to the motion by Mr. Vigliotti? Is there, there's no demolition required on this one, right?
There's a house there coming down, right?
I can't remember.
Well, whether it is-
Whatever, they'll figure it out. It's in the standard stipulations. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to-
One more item, I'm sorry, guys, it's enough for other items. Did everyone have a chance to look at the, the calendar?
Oh, good catch.
It's not, it's not on the agenda and we have time to vote on it next month. But I just wanted to make sure that no one had any concerns with dates and times on there.
They're all fine by me.
I have absolutely no concerns with the schedule for next year.
If you wanted to vote on it tonight, I have it ready, you know.
Well, it would be, it would be up to these two guys.
So the, the proposed, the proposed schedule for next year is for meetings on, an organizational meeting on January 12th, meetings on January 12th and 26th, February 9th and 23rd, March 9th and 23rd, April 13th and 27th, May 11th and 25th, June 8th and 22nd, July 13th and 27th, August 10th and 24th, September 14th and 28th, October 26th, November 9th and December 14th. And that's assuming, I'm assuming, I don't know if Mr. Vigliotti or if you or Mr. Watson or whoever, or Mr. Francis are going to be chairman. If you hold to the same rule of only one meeting per month, you'll be canceling a few of these, but that's the draft that follows the, the process we followed for the last four years. So I would suggest that we adopt this and if any changes required by the new commissioners, they can always amend it. So I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Second, aye. Very good, very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carries unanimously. John Hancock this?
Now I can make a motion to approve, or to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Henrick. Is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carries unanimously. Great job, everybody. Best wishes for a happy Thanksgiving to you guys and your families and we'll see you in December.
Thank you, commissioners, for working together.
This was a ex, a very good, good job, everybody.